Which, you're up. Take your choice. Welcome. Okay.
Hello, everyone. I'm Matthew Kirchner with Eagle Engineering. I'm here tonight to present Chestnut Parkway mixed use with you. Going through, I'm gonna go a little bit back at the project area that you have here. Town, does this have a pointer too? The red dot? Perfect. Like it's, you guys are getting awesome by the ears.
Matthew?
Matthew? Yes, sir.
Can you raise your mic so you can speak in? Sorry.
No, it's okay. Ready to be able to hear me.
Thank you, Matthew.
Town Hall is right over here. Our protest site is right across from the Chestnut Parkway parks. You got the swim club just to north of us there. Our commercial site is almost like an out parcel of the swim club. The hub property is right here on this side to give you kind of a look to where it's at. This is kind of a little bit farther back and some pictures of what the existing site is now. Undeveloped or semi-residential developed with some trailers on it now, kind of abandoned. Again, a little bit farther zoomed out. Town Hall in here, 74 on this side. Your Chestnut Parkway or Chestnut Square Park right here in the center. Existing zoning as of right now is single-family one. It is in the downtown overlay, which is the bold orange here. It goes around part here in red is the site that we are showing you tonight. So I'll go through it. This is part of your future land planning that I pulled from the sites. You can see their new stadium turf's here. Light rail that runs along the front of the site. And then Town Homes is part of the future land use plan that's on the site now. We're extending a little bit farther down here on here. And on the next slide, I'll kind of show you a little bit farther out. So here's the Town Homes. Here's the swim club. So our property will be across here, commercial piece there, come back and around. You know, if I, with the mouse, they're able to see it on the screen, aren't they?
No.
Okay. I'm, I usually do the mouse and you guys can't see what I'm pointing on the screen here. It's a little bit harder for you guys to see. Hub's right here. That kind of shows you what we're in line with that downtown Indian Trail look that you have here. Here's a rendering of what we're proposing. Let me just flip through a couple of those ones so I can have it. So we got 92 Town Homes. Thirty will be rear load. So this will be that front facing streets, three-story high Town Homes. And I have some renders of that one. And then we'll have 62, just your normal rear load products there. And then we'll have attached this as a commercial flex space. Restaurants, office spaces kind of open. We're gonna build a two-story shell. About 7,200 square feet per floor on that side. That will kind of blend in with the parks that we have here and the swim club that we have there. Kind of tying everything into that downtown feel, walking and be able to get to everything. This kind of gives you an idea of what we have here. As you can see, we had the pond here at the front. Gonna throw a nice fountain in it, kind of highlight as you're going into it, bring it up the front. Benches, fountain, so that you're kind of looking out. This is the pond at Brandon Oaks. That kind of gives you an idea of what you have. It's just a nice place to be able to fish or walk around it and cruise around. I mean, the biggest thing here is we got the Indian Trail parks right across the way. And no amount of money that we put into the site compared to what you guys have already provided right across the street. So we're just trying to accent, make sure they have availability to get across there. So we will have, let me see if I can flip over one more. Back one. Over here on this side here, we're gonna put across, walk across just to make sure that is elevated and everybody can get across the parks nice and easily. So we want everybody to be able to walk to where they're going and not always just have to get in their vehicles and drive. From here, I got a couple elevations. So this is the front load that's gonna be facing Chestnut Parkway that those 30 or so that are right there on the road. You'll be able to walk into them. Light rails in front of this one. So you have road, light rail. These Town Homes with rear loads on that side. These are the normal front load garages. You can see with stone, different colors on there. I think actually, this is the other one. This is the old one. Sorry, I have a, some updated ones for you. Top one and the third one down, that one right there. See if I can scroll down. This is, this one's pretty much still the same. We just kind of added into the grass stuff that you can see on the front. This one, we met with the town and took some of their stuff. So you see more of the brick and the more neutral colors that we have on that one there. Kind of dressed that up with the nice front covers. And the garage doors are updated too to kind of give that more high-end look. Here's some pictures of the, some proposed elevations for the commercial side. Again, two stories, kind of matching in with what you have around it. Here's another one that way, we have a restaurant on the side of it, like a little patio area. It's kind of what you're, what we're seeing proposed on that side. And this is the actual conditional rezoning site plan where you can kind of see where everything's at. Your lots, your, these are your Town Home sides. Rear loads here, front loads everywhere else. Commercial, kind of tying in the swim club and everything around on that side. This should be the last slide, I believe. Yes. So I'm now available for any questions or comments or anything that I can help assist with.
Any questions?
Like you showed units, some with garages, some without, right?
They're all, they all have garages.
They all have garages.
Yeah, so the only difference is you have the front loads that will be a step back that will have garages. And the reason you don't see it on this one, this is the front side. So these are rear-loaded garages. So there'll be garages on the back, but this is what you'll see driving down Chestnut Parkway.
So there's no street parking then, right?
No, no street parking with inside of it. You're correct.
There is street parking.
No, no street parking within the project. Yeah, they'll have the garages and then we made sure there's 20-foot on the driveways so that you can park on the driveways as well. You'll see on the site plan, let me kick back. It's kind of hard to tell, but you'll see we've actually kicked the sidewalk monolithic with the curb so that it gives that theme so everybody can get on there. We make sure when people are in the driveways, there's no bumpers or anything hanging on the sidewalk so that everything's in it. There will be no on-street parking with inside the Town Home area. Everything will be in the garages or driveways.
Ms. Howe.
You said the, there's 92 Town Homes?
Ninety-two total Town Homes, yes, ma'am.
And what's the 62?
The 62, so I have 30 rear loads that are along the road here. And then 62 would be the normal front loads on the back. So 92 total Town Homes. There's just two different ones. There are some that have the garages in the back, so they have that nice front. So when you're walking off Chestnut Parkway, you walk into a front-load house. So there's no driveways in the front. They're in the back of it.
What's your price range?
They haven't finalized that, but they're telling me the 300s.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mr. Morse, you have a question?
Yes, sir. How many bedrooms are these Town Homes?
Do we have, I didn't see a floor plan. Do we have three bedrooms? Three bedrooms.
And is there other, any amenities, like if somebody has pets and?
So we will incorporate a walking trail around the pond. That's about as far as it goes. I mean, when we're looking at what the town's provided across the street, our biggest thing is making sure that we have that protection connectivity so that they can get across the street and use the public parks that are right there.
Well, I guess I'm asking, do you have a dog park instead of having the dogs come over to the field?
We could probably in that, we have some open space on the sides here or even on the sides here that we can, we can definitely look into providing something like that for for that use. That is definitely something we'll note and see what we can work in.
And then I had one other question about the, can you back up to the slide with the light rail?
Was it zoomed in a little bit? Or you went to one that's out a little bit farther or one that's?
That'll be fine, right there. Patrick, is that practical to have the light rail end as a terminus there?
Absolutely. I think the size is approximate and it would fit there. We do have 50-foot available. If you look at any end station, it doesn't require more width than that. And then also what we're gonna communicate with cats is if they allow us to bring, let's say from Stallings, one track as long as it's under that 15-minute round trip. So I've talked to Andy Mark. We will be discussing that in the next 11 months. But yes, in end station like that, it will fit within the 50 feet that we have. And then also, I mentioned to council before that we are not gonna give Chestnut Parkway to the state because of the on-street parking and in case we need some space on the side for additional walkway or whatever. But that is also, if it's not, it's not only the end station. If we go anywhere on south end or anywhere around the alignment, you will see that some of those condominiums, they're about 10 feet away from the track. So that's something common throughout the downtown area. And based on the sketch that you see or the rendering, what I did here is I took it from an end station and I just plugged it in there and scaled it based on the scale of the drawing. So to answer your question, Mr. Morse, it will fit. The most critical part right here is that turning radius that you see on the left-hand side, cats require 80 feet. That's, you can't turn a train unless it's an 80-foot radius. So if we ever bring the light rail to Indian Trail, we're looking into having it direct fixation within the street. Matthew's Indian Trail will be required to be three-lane, one dedicated for the light rail.
There's an adequate right-of-way there to satisfy that?
Yes. Right now, we could definitely fit one additional lane in there.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Patrick?
Yes, sir.
Is that parking to the north there where?
You mean behind the light rail?
Yes.
No, end station, they always require an area in case the light rail couldn't stop. So at the end of that thing, you will see some bumpers with some spirals or whatever you call them. So they always require-
So that's the, okay. Emergency stop type.
Yes, sir. Emergency stop.
So where would the parking be?
I'm sorry?
Where would the parking be?
The rail all the time, if you see, if you're coming around the curve, you got a Y there. So in case you have two trains in there, if you have one stage, then the other one could go to the other side of the station. This is a center station.
Rider parking.
Rider parking.
Car and a courts.
Oh, you mean for vehicles that coming in?
Right.
You see those two parking garages that we're showing Mike? Cats at every end station, they always require parking garage to accommodate the end station.
These are not surface lots, right? These are elevated?
They are multiple-story parking garage. And I think each one of them, if later on the light rail comes in, it will accommodate 750, approximately 750 parking spaces, which is much larger than what we have at I-485 parking garage.
What is it zoned now? What was it gonna be zoned under the new UDL?
Randy? SF4.
SF1 is what it's currently. Zone right now is currently SF1 with the downtown overlay and it will be a conditional mixed use. That's what we're proposing to have it done.
Okay.
I have two more questions. What's this square footage in the apartments or the Town Homes?
I do have that. One second. 2,100 to 2,300 square feet.
What's the average rental?
Rental?
The fee?
These are rentals. I think these are for sale units.
Oh, I'm sorry, I should, I was, yeah, you're right. My bad.
And the projected price of these?
It will be in the 300s. They don't have it nailed down to a tight one, but they're telling me it's in the 300s.
And your timeframe to build?
Timeframe to build, I actually have that as well. They're gonna start CDs 30 days after Town Council approval. If you guys do approval at that time, they've got about eight months for doing construction drawings. Then construction will be about eight months. Full build-out will be three years from there. You're looking probably fours, four and a half years for the total process.
I have only one question.
That's okay.
The driveways.
Driveways.
Big enough to fit the big pickup trucks?
Yes, and that's why we extended and put that sidewalk right on the curve, made that monolithic curve down there so that we extended them 20-foot minimum on the driveways for parking.
Okay. Patrick, do you have any closing remarks?
This is the first development that we have downtown that is bringing in commercial. We definitely need to see some commercial. So I think the developer, the owner and the developers, they acquired one point-some acre from the swim, from Mecklenburg Swimming Academy. And the other item I would like to add is that no environmental issues. It's not a site that require any environmental studies or anything like that.
There's no environmental issues that we know at this time.
That's correct.
All right. Well, we want to thank you and I'll make one closing remark. I agree with Mr. Morse 100%. We really would like to see a dedicated area for people's pets and then not have our parks be used as a dumping site.
We completely understand. We'll definitely look into that. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. 15-minute break. Welcome, everyone. This time, a few reminders. Please place your cell phones on silent or turn them off if you need to take a call. Please step outside. No screaming out from the audience. I'll only give one warning. Please be respectful. And at this time, I'd like to welcome you all to the Indian Trail Town Council meeting for December 18, 2019. If you'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone will remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. May be seated. At this time, are there any agenda additions or deletions?
I've got one deletion, deletion. Seven G, approval of amended Indian Trail's street-
Mr. Head, can you pull your microphone down so everybody can hear you?
Under seven consent agenda, I'd like to strike G, approval of amended Indian Trail's street acceptance policy.
Okay, so moved at the request of the Town Manager?
Yes, sir.
So removed for more work? Okay. Any other additions or deletions at this time? Then I'll need a motion to approve the amended agenda, please.
So moved.
Mr. Morse made the motion. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to presentations. This time, we have a presentation to Mr. Shirley Howe. In remembrance, Mr. Kenneth Howe, I'd like to read. If that's okay with you? Yes. "In honor and memory of Kenneth Wesley Howe. Whereas the Town Council of the Town of Indian Trail pauses to recognize the life and loss thereof of a most respected and admired citizen of the Town of Indian Trail, Kenneth Wesley Howe. Whereas Kenneth Howe, born in Cleveland, Ohio, on March 6, 1937, to parents Thurlow and Ruth Howe, was a longtime resident of Indian Trail. Whereas Kenneth Howe served in the Army Reserve as part of the 83rd Infantry Division from January 24, 1955 until November 21, 1963, and carried the rank of sergeant. Whereas Kenneth Howe served the citizens of the Town of Indian Trail alongside his loving wife Shirley, designing unique homes in the area and transforming himself into the local Uncle Sam for town parades and elections. Whereas Kenneth Howe was a dedicated husband, fully supportive of his wife Shirley, as she served as council member to the Town of Indian Trail, so much so that recently, against advice of doctors and his wife, he checked himself out of the hospital in order to vote for her in the recent Town Council election and told her he has always voted for her and always would. Whereas Kenneth Howe was a loving and devoted son, brother, father, husband, and husband who loved cooking, restoring classic cars, and traveling the world with Shirley. Whereas Kenneth Howe entered glory on December 4, 2019. Therefore, I, Michael L. Alvarez, Mayor of the Town of Indian Trail, do hereby honor and remember the life of Kenneth Wesley Howe and call upon all citizens of the Town of Indian Trail to pause momentarily in his honor. Witness my hand, the official seal of the Town of Indian Trail, on the 18th day of December, 2019." We love you, Shirley. What?
We were a surprise and a precious here.
Well, that's not all. He couldn't make it here tonight because of voting going on in Washington, but Congressman Bishop will be bringing you a flag that has been flown over the Capitol in memory of your husband and his service to his country.
That's great.
Thank you for all you've done. Do you need a moment?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. All right. Michelle Reese, are you here? Yeah, so we'll strike that. Strike that other presentation. We'll move on to public comments. Did they show up? Okay. So as no one has signed up for the public comments portion of the Town Council meeting, I will open and close the public comments section. Captain James, any update? Welcome, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I won't take a lot of your time. I prepared this report again like I did for the month of October to give you kind of a baseline for some of the numbers I'll be presenting to you in the future. If you look at those, the offenses reported are actually based off of nine, of Indian Trail being split in half. You gotta have nine north and nine south, which is the zone, specific zone for it. The, had 256 total calls and that was actually reportable incidents where paper was actually written on a report. 345 business checks and then 2,048 preventative patrols. And that could have also included outside business checks, neighborhoods, that sort of thing. During the month of November, as you're aware, we lost two lives on US 74 in a traffic crash, two young lives. With that being said, I kind of redirected some of our staff to start a campaign on US 74 in this new super-street section to try to slow traffic down and try to come up with a solution or somewhat partial solution to why we're having so many crashes on 74. If you go back to the back of that package, you'll see the number of crashes we had in Indian Trail during the month of November. That number's still staying around 70. I'm almost positive, without looking back and having that number in front, I made 77 in October and I think we were 73 for the month of November. Any loss of life is bad. Any injury, serious injury is bad. But what we're also looking at is occupants that are unrestrained, crashes that are happening because of violation of the traffic lights, violation of the law. It's just not something that's a mishap, actually somebody's having to make an error in judgment or for something bad to happen, for somebody to get hurt. But during the month of November and also, I'm sorry, during the month of December and the month of January, I've got three cars that we have specified. That's what they're, that's what they're doing. They're trying to work on crash reduction. Hopefully next month, well, next month I will have some numbers for December to try to compare. But the target enforcement they're doing is also trying to let people know. And it's almost about as much as educate, about education as it is, you know, writing a citation. They're writing just as many warning tickets as they are citations. But if they're clear-cut violations of the law, they're walking away with a citation. Just trying to get this number now and before anybody else gets hurt. The total events for the month were 4,434. So that's the 26 officers that you have here in Indian Trail. Either responded to a call, did a business check, got out and walked into a business, encountered someone 4,434 times during the month of November. That was up 305 from the month of October. I'd like for you to bear that in mind when you base it on the number of officers that you have here in Indian Trail that I would respectfully tell you they're not sitting around. They're staying busy and they're working as hard as they can trying to prevent crime for one, but also trying to do you a good job. And I hope you recognize that. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. McIntyre?
I know you probably don't have that data yet, but in regards to the accidents that we see on 74, your initial knowledge before putting that together, so I know it's not gonna be accurate, but do you think that these are related to speeding or you think it's related more to the change in the traffic patterns and the addition of lights and lanes and so forth?
I think there's several. You've got several contributing circumstances to it. But Deputy Barbie, who was assigned as one of the crash investigators, for the year, for 2019, he's almost investigated 400 wrecks. And 95% of those are in the Town of Indian Trail. He is gonna be the high-crash guy in the state of North Carolina, more than likely. The state of North Carolina, not Union County. So that's the most accidents that one officer has worked in the state of North Carolina. So when you talk about those numbers, I think the super-street project plays a part in it because of the new patterns. But I think also you look at that you've got, obviously, inattention is part of it. But in talking to him, a lot of it is from the feeder roads in these multiple turn lanes. That if you've got somebody who's not paying attention and either on the phone or doing something else, car pulls off in front of them, instead of them looking at the light and the car behind them, they pull out and they end up getting hit. And that seems to be this right turn, different roadway. So the crashes are happening because somebody's pulling out in front of somebody else.
So if I can ask one, if I can make one request from you. When you present the data in terms of comparing last year, different periods and so forth with the super-street, I know it's not complete yet, there's still certain portions, it has to be, but is there any way you can quantify sort of the contributing factors or the primary factor in the crash?
I have requested that from the software company that the state uses now for, called E-Crash. We're working on that, but the part we're having trouble with is breaking the data down.
Okay.
You have to go through every individual report to try to pull individual stats out of it. But like I did with this package you've got here, and it's kind of hard to see and I didn't really want to put it in there, but I did. It's the map that was emailed to you about crash locations. And the little dots represent your more serious crashes. And they're all at the intersections, starting just east of Wesley Chapel Stouts and Sardis and Working West. So in the numbers, it looks like a glob, basically, as you move from intersection to intersection.
And the reason I was asking that question is because Monroe Road is expected to be widened and the same street pattern is expected to be adopted. So it'd be good to sort of have that data, maybe sort of bringing it to the attention of, if that is the actual cause.
Yes, well, that's what I'm, I'm trying to compile that information now so you will have it well before the, that goes into place.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Morse?
I live right beside the super-street, so I take it every day. And one of the things you just mentioned that I've observed is the right-on reds. That is problematic. Is there a process that the town can go through or the sheriff's department if it's deemed that maybe there shouldn't be right-on reds that would decrease these crashes?
Me and Mr. Sadek have talked about this and we're actually in works now trying to alleviate part-
Captain James and I, we talked, in addition to his process, and I've done that in Myrtle Beach, we took 1,200 accident reports, the report itself, and we analyzed every intersection. And that's what we do. We do traffic analysis to every intersection. The dots that he's showing at every intersection, we start with the most congested one and try to figure out the cause. We will exchange the info, and our ultimate goal, like Mr. McIntyre said, is to share this with DOT, try to resolve that issue before we start moving to Monroe Road. So our ultimate goal is to compile that information, put it before North Carolina DOT. Well, the main goal would be to save accidents and save lives, but we're going to hit the worst-case intersection and go down the list.
Very good.
Anything else, Captain? Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. McIntyre's made a motion to approve. All in favor. Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to public hearing. Item A. Zoning map amendment, ZM 2019-0086-6714, Seacrest Shortcut Road, North Gate Industrial, and 0704-2009. Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The first public hearing for this evening is a zoning map amendment for the property located at 6714 Seacrest Shortcut Road, also known as ZM 2019-0086. This project entitled North Gate Industrial includes approximately 18.45 acres, which is currently zoned single-family residential or SF1, with a proposed zoning of light industrial, and the applicant is Seacrest Shortcut Ventures LLC. As you can see here, the three parcels highlighted in blue, which were a part of the original North Gate residential conditional zoning until the bypass intersected that. Here's some photos of the site, existing conditions displayed, the property is displayed on your left. Then the Seacrest Shortcut Small Area Plan that was done with Union County, this is the most recent planning document governing this area and proposes this location as employment, which fits perfect with the proposed use of light industrial. This request is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan, meeting land use and housing goals number four and number six, as well as economic development goals number one and number four. This is a reasonable request, and because it conforms with the plans adopted by the town, and the requested action of town council is the usual two-step voting process after input and discussion has occurred. Thank you for your time, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, council? Any discussion? Anything to add, Mr. Sedek?
Is that the same map that we received that it shows the seven or eight buildings, light industrial buildings?
That's correct. Yes.
I do have a question. Is the applicant here, by the way?
Yes, sir.
Any idea what's proposed? I know it says light industrial, but any idea as to the future plans?
So we talked with the applicant about this, and of course, they had the option to go conditional zoning, but they were not asking for any relief from the Unified Development Ordinance in any way. The short, the small area plan called this out to be exactly what they're proposing. So we felt very comfortable with it. And that was the decision by the applicant to go for just a zoning amendment. But they have shared with us their plans, I believe it's, and they can speak more directly to it, but I believe it's nine buildings, light industrial, that they've proposed. But of course, council should just consider the rezoning, not any concept plan at this time.
And that small area plan was the plan approved with the county Monroe and Henley Bridge Indian Trail, right?
Just, it was a joint effort by Union County and Indian Trail.
Okay. I think Henley had a little piece in that, but, all right. Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, I will open and close public comments since no one has signed up for them, and request the following votes, requested actions. Who would like to take the first shot at it?
I'll make that motion. Unless anybody else wants to. I'll make the motion.
Mr. McIntyre?
All right. So I want to make a motion to approve the consistency findings as read into the record by staff for ZM 2019-0086 for 6714 Seacrest Shortcut Road, ordinance number 324.
Okay. The motion for the consistency findings has been made by Mr. McIntyre. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. I need a second motion, please.
I'll also make that motion. Motion to approve, as presented, the request to approve the rezoning, ZM 2019-0086 for 6714 Seacrest Shortcut Road, ordinance number 324.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion to approve. All in favor? That motion carries unanimously also. Thank you. That brings us to a conditional zoning request for CZ 2019-0045 Sun Valley Station, ordinance number 323, parcels number 0709-0009A and 0709-0009.
Thank you, Mayor and council, once again. Our second and final public hearing for the night is CZ 2019-0045 Sun Valley Station. This is a request by Liquid Management LLC to rezone 8.87 acres from single-family SF1 to conditional zoning general business district. The uses proposed during the original submission included the development of a retail center with possible uses such as bowling alley, pet supply store, and fitness center. The UDO does not permit bowling alleys and recreation uses under the retail category. The applicant has chosen to prohibit any conflicts moving forward, especially with the Giraffe Unified Development Ordinance in the picture, and has decided to open it up to all the uses permitted in the general business district. So I wanted to provide for you tonight a summary of those uses in the general business district. So bear with me, this may be a little lengthier than normal. Some of the general categories, and then I'll dive into some examples, just so there's clarity on that. So animal services, sales and grooming with no kennels or boarding, artists' work or sales space, business equipment, sales and service, business support services, communication service establishments, construction sales and services, again, all indoors, drive-through facilities such as restaurants, banks, drugstores, eating and drinking establishments, entertainment, sports, all indoors, financial services, food and beverages such as a grocery store, bakery, funeral services, no cremations permitted, lodging, medical services, offices, personal services, repair service, consumers, and that repair service would be consumers such as a locksmith, musical instrument repair, shoe repair, retail sales, sports and recreation, theater, minor utilities, vehicle sales and services, indoor only, and they also have additional requirements contained with the, in the UDO as well. And these uses, just understand that outdoor storage in general would only be allowed currently by a special use permit by the Board of Adjustment. So anything outdoor would require that additional step. And then if council so chooses, they may prohibit any of these uses by adding language within the conditions. We'll just go through the request. So here you see on the screen, the concept plan as proposed and included within your agenda packet as well. The applicant has agreed, based on discussions at Planning Board, to construct an eight-foot solid wall with a berm and tree plantings atop that will face the residential structures to the south. So those structures would be looking at vegetation and the berm versus just a solid wall. The applicant has met the 25-foot buffer as required by the Unified Development Ordinance, and in addition, has added 18 feet to that buffer totaling 43 feet. And the building is a total of 63 feet from the property line. Here's the aerial just displaying the two parcels contained within the proposal highlighted in blue. Here's photos of the existing site. And then here's the existing zoning map showing that existing SF1 currently. And then the future land use, this is set out to be mixed use in this area. Consistency findings, this proposal complies with the town's comprehensive plan. We looked at traffic and parking. This project did not meet the threshold for traffic impact analysis by the town. NC DOT draft road improvements for the Old Monroe Road project are incorporated into the plan, and NC DOT has given conceptual approval. And the proposal more than meets the number of required parking spaces. As you'll see here, all the county agencies have approved the concept plan. Union County Sheriff's Office requested security fencing along the rear, and the applicant has agreed. That's also been added to the conditions as well. Just a quick synopsis of the community meetings held back in June, and some of the concerns were proximity to the residential, rear parking, loading areas, noise, pollution, traffic, security. And then the neighboring property owner did speak highly of the developer and understands the growth proposed, and that has occurred. Planning Board recommended approval of this request unanimously at their November meeting with the conditions previously discussed. And in summary, this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan by promoting quality of life, land use and housing, and economic development goals contained within the comprehensive plan. This is a reasonable request based on it meeting that future land use plan, and staff recommends the conditions listed in the packet. And we can take a look at those individually if council so chooses. And then finally, the requested action of council is the usual two-step process.
Is the applicant here? Did you have anything you'd like to add at this time?
We're here to answer any questions, but we don't need to present. Brandy did a great job, so.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions for Ms. Moser? Ms. Barber?
Just to clarify, I've been following this project, and originally started out at 25 feet, and now you're saying the buffer is 43 feet, correct?
Bowler Engineering is here as well, that can verify any of the exact numbers. I don't want to tell you wrong on that.
So 25 and 18 is 43. Okay. And you started out?
It was increased, based on.
Had a chain-link fence, and now we're going to an eight-foot solid wall, right? Correct?
It's six feet, is what we agreed to.
She said eight feet.
She just said eight. Please, audience, no outbursts.
I believe, Brandy, do you want to speak to that?
Six feet, eight feet, whichever. You can let me know.
So the recommendation by Planning Board was eight feet, but as our town attorney can attest, the applicant would have to agree to that on the record for any conditions being considered.
So you're saying?
We agreed to a six foot. We did not agree to an eight foot. What's at Sun Valley is six foot, and so we agreed to six foot, but not eight foot.
So the wall's the same as the one over at the movie theater?
Correct.
Okay, six feet. Can I ask the captain a question? Okay. First off, welcome to Indian Trail. Congratulations on you. So the, since they're proposing a solid wall over at this project, just like the one at the movie theater, have we had a big problem with people climbing the wall or going through the neighborhood back there or anything? Has it been a real security issue behind the wall to that neighborhood that you know of?
No, sir. I actually proposed it to my staff during this past week. It's not been used as a cutthroat. There was one incident that was remembered by local supervisors that happened sometime in their life in the field, and that was just a kid sitting on top of the wall. It wasn't an issue of them going back and forth or anything, or somebody sitting there. It wasn't really an issue of somebody moving from one side to the other.
So even though we got establishments over there serving alcohol, we don't have a bunch of drunks crawling the wall and stuff? Okay. Okay. So it hasn't been a security issue then? Okay, and we're looking at the same wall behind this?
Correct. The six foot, not eight foot. So that there's clarification.
I've got one other question then.
Sure.
When I was looking at the proposal is, we're looking at a bowling alley, family fund center, a pet store, and like a athletic center or gym or something?
Yes, sir. From what's proposed is the fitness center.
How many jobs you think just those three businesses might bring to Indian Trail?
Just those three, the bowling alley will probably be 15 to 20, the retail 20 to 30, and then out parcel 10 to 20 employees. And then that doesn't include the construction jobs throughout the process, and then the management landscaping ongoing. Those are just the businesses within.
This may be more of a question for Captain James or for Patrick. The wall behind the stone theaters, the property that's behind the theater, what is the distance of those houses to that wall in comparison to this project to the wall?
I am familiar with the distances from the nine homes to the property line. For this particular case, they vary from 50 to 75, if I'm not mistaken. Some of them are 80. So I think, I think we do have similar situation to what you're referring to, but we did not measure that distance. But we're very confident about the distances that we took for the nine homes where the bowling alley is going to be.
Right.
I just answered half of your question.
Yes, sir. Because I went over to the stone theaters and I was looking at those homes, and it just seemed like that would be a greater distance setback from those houses, from the wall, and it seemed substantial. And then I guess my other question is, is how many other locations in Indian Trail where you have a residence with a business or a proposed general business like this that close to the property owners?
With a wall or without a wall?
Without a wall.
Without a wall. That's a big, broad question right there.
I believe I can think of three right off the top of my head. Food Lion Shopping Center. Where, okay.
Indian Trail Road.
The other shopping center that borders to your neighborhood.
That's Food Lion, too.
That is a Food Lion also. And what, I just, I just missed one. Any other Food Lion on Monroe Road?
Downtown Indian Trail.
Downtown Indian Trail. Indian Trail Road.
Are they that similar 25-foot?
There's no wall. There's some trees, and they back up the properties. And the biggest issue that we've ever had brought before the council, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, is flooding issues that were done prior to the county changing the way they built, because they were built way back.
I don't think any of those are entertainment centers, though, are they?
You asked for businesses, specifically. Microphone, Mr. Head.
Those are just businesses.
That's what he asked for. He just asked for businesses.
I'm asking for, do you know if there's any entertainment?
We don't have any other entertainment other than Sun Valley Commons that I know of. Do we have any entertainment district other than Sun Valley Commons? No.
I just, Brandy, if you wouldn't mind responding on what the UDO requirements are, there is a rule regarding business residential buffers. Is that correct?
Yes. So the proposed use is considered a type two, which would require 25-foot buffer as the minimum. And again, the applicant has agreed to increase that based on the input at Planning Board. And just real quickly, if I may, Adam was so kind to do some rough measurements from Google Earth on the Picket Circle properties. So we're looking at one house is 100, one's 50, one's 75, and one's 100. And then we have a listing of all the houses backing up on Spanish Mall, so we could share as well.
So what was the closest, 100 or?
50, 50 feet. 50, 50 feet. Thank you.
Are any of those houses two-story?
No, I think most of them are one-story, if you're referring to the ones on Picket Circle.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? Ms. Moser? Safety seems to be the biggest concern. How do you plan on addressing this?
Sure. So at Sun Valley Commons, we have private security that we can also extend the contract for across the street if there are any issues there. They're already patrolling Sun Valley Commons. Just going across the street would be just an addition, but we're open to doing that to control any future issues.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. This time, I'm going to open up the public comments. As a reminder, you have three minutes. No screaming, no yelling, be respectful to the person speaking as well to the council. As a rule of thumb for public comments policy, those that are in a group should be, have, pick one speaker. So all those that live on Spanish Moss Road, if you could, pick one speaker and come to the microphone. I will give you five minutes to speak. You can go back and forth. That is in the rules of the Town of Indian Trail for public comments.
May I make a motion to suspend those rules?
You can make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend those rules to allow the people on Spanish Moss adequate time to be able to state their case.
Okay, that is perfectly fine. Mr. Morse has made a motion for public comment suspension to allow all of them to speak. All in favor?
Before we vote on that item, are we gonna let, is the time limit still the same? Are we going back to regular? Because?
It's still three minutes per person.
Okay, so just regular, but everybody can speak? That's it?
Everybody can speak, three minutes.
Yeah. No, go ahead.
Okay. Motion's been made, all in favor.
I'll support that.
Okay. Rule suspended. Everybody gets to speak. Three minutes. Madison Toth, just state your name. You don't need to state your address publicly, please. That's a reminder to everyone.
My name's Madison Toth. I appreciate you making this adjustment for us, as I feel strongly that each and every one of our voices matter, and each of our opinions matter regardless of companies we may or may not be representing. So we each definitely deserved this right to speak. I know there were a few adjustments made, so what I have to say is a bit adjusted. I know it's very easy to kind of consider new developments if you're not, it's not your backyard, but this is my backyard. And so as far as the buildings with people, the cut-throughs and things like that, you know, we can't compare the movie theater to what this is going to be. There's so many different factors. The distance between the movie theater and the residential properties over there is significant compared to what it's going to be here. You know, I see there are changes, and the bowling alley sounds like it's not going to be allowed, which is wonderful. And the distance did seem to increase, but still, to put that off and assume that we're not going to have any conflict when our homes are so much different than the homes behind the movie theater, I don't feel like that's a great comparison. Mainly, what I wanted to talk about today was just the concerns that we had regarding with what the Moser Group said during the last meeting. There was a claim made that majority of the residents of Brandon Oaks were in support of this proposal, which just, as far as I know, wasn't true. I know there was a Facebook post made in our community page earlier this year that asked who wanted family activities in the area, which people said yes, too. But I feel like if that's being used to say that majority of us all want this, that's very misleading and false. So I'm looking for statistical evidence to show that all the residents, the majority of residents, excuse me, residents in Brandon Oaks truly want this, because I don't think that. Also, at the end of the meeting, we were told that the Moser Group was going to reach out to us and possibly come walk our property. That has not happened. We have not been reached out to. So right now, even with these adjustments, it's hard for me to really trust and feel like the Moser Group is being neighborly to us if we already kind of have had empty promises. So I look forward to hearing what they have to say. Thank you so much.
Sandy Toth?
Hi, thank you for letting us all speak. Just to kind of take off where she left off, I brought some pictures. This is the back of our house. This is my backyard. This is my view today. So you can see the big canopy of trees that are there. Imagine what a 40-foot building would do to my property value and my privacy. It's very close. We have two-story homes, all of us. This is my balcony, the whole back of my house. It's 18 feet of windows and a view. I bought a house, not just for the house. A house is more than brick and mortar. It's a home. It's an experience. We bought this place. We bought the whole place. It's going to substantially change our way of life. At the very first meeting I ever attended regarding this potential rezoning, the future owner of the bowling alley stood up and made a statement. She said, "This land is going to be developed. If it isn't my project, then it's going to be someone else's project, but it's going to happen." She was absolutely correct, and I'm here today to say, "We need to wait for the next project." If the Town of Indian Trail wants a bowling alley, then we ask you to consider other land that is better suited for this commercial space. The body of land, if being rezoned, needs to be rezoned to the original mixed-use zoning code, which was suggested in the development plan of 2007. This aligns more with being adjacent to existing residential housing. The UDO and comprehensive plan do not call for sacrifice of our quality of life and financial investment in the name of progress, which is exactly what this project will do. We are asking for your protection. We are asking you to protect the unique identity of the properties that are already here versus protecting an idea of what could be. This project destroys my property value and part of my quality of life without paying for it. That's illegal, and that's unconstitutional. This project does not improve my neighborhood nor strengthen my community. I'm asking you today to do the right thing. Per the UDO, say no to this project. I have a young daughter. The building sits 20 feet from where she sleeps and enjoys being in our backyard that's private. We have, we will have onsite noise, air pollution, crime, peeping toms and gawkers looking at us, sitting on top of the wall, as we heard. Not to mention, the lush wooded view will be gone, and we'll look at a bowling alley and a bar. We were planning to put in a pool this spring. I ask you, would you feel comfortable having your young daughter in a bikini out there behind all of this? Would Mr. Moser feel comfortable with his daughter being in a swimsuit behind a bar? I will not ever feel comfortable with this. We will never know who is watching or spying. Our quality of life, home value, will change forever for this project, and no one will pay for it but us every day. Our house is not just brick and mortar. It's not just a price tag.
Thank you. I will empty the room except for the speakers if there's any more outbursts. Dan Wooton?
Hello, my name's Dan Wooton, and I actually grew up in the property that's for sale that Moser's looking to develop. We moved there in 1977, when it was basically all farmland throughout there in the back. So just give a different perspective from someone that's been around for a while and grew his whole life in Union County. And my parents have, my mom's been there even further back than that. And so the property's been for sale for years and years. Several projects have come through, which the town has denied for whatever reason, whatever. Remember, this plan does meet the Town of Indian Trail's comprehensive plan, and it meets the requirements that the board's looked at and everything. And so we think it's a good project. I'm for the project. I think it'll be a great project, even though it's going to see my home that I grew up in torn down. But it's going to be a great project for a community. It's a good thing for my parents. They lived there all their lives, and so now they're needing to sell it. Matter of fact, my dad had a stroke a couple months ago, hoping he'd been sold, moved in another house by then before. He's going on and on for different projects. Remember, it's their personal property. It's not the Town of Indian Trail's property. It's not their property. It's my parents' backyard, not their backyard. Now, when their development came through, my dad did approach the developer to ask for a buffer, or not a buffer, but to buy some property, because then he was going to build a lot of homes back there, because our home butts up pretty close to the line. The developer denied that request. My dad was filed with that, no big deal. He started growing brush and trees and stuff along his property line to build his own buffer on its own backyard, not someone else's backyard. So he understood the progress that comes, and it's part of the process. Most dynamic growing county in North Carolina, you're going to have progress. It will be developed, I do believe that. I can understand the concerns of the joint property owners. You know, before we looked down in our backyard, all we saw was fields, farmland. Now we see two-story houses all across the back. And so, but we adjusted to it. We went on, and it hadn't been a problem. Been good neighbors, no issues with that. I think a lot of their fears will come to be erroneous. I don't think there'll be any problems with that. They may not like it. You know, there are certain aspects that, you know, I don't want to see my home torn down, but that's just part of the process of progression. So good plan. It'll be good for the Town of Indian Trail, and I wish the council would vote for it. And I wish you the best in your decision.
Nicole Burnett?
I'm asking you to please say no to this project as it is proposed. The location is wrong for it as it is proposed right now, and the UDO says so. Whether it is a bowling alley slash bar or something else, the property needs to be able to accommodate at least a 50-foot buffer slash easement, an eight-foot wall, and an 15- to 18-foot berm. If not, then this is not suited for that land. Besides which, this project is not mixed use as land is designated to be. We understand that things change, and there is going to be growth. We have come not only to accept this, but to also welcome it, if it is done the right way, where the growth does actually increase value to our community and our homes. We love our neighborhood, but we have contemplated moving to the Waxaw-Weddington area because of the unique little shops and restaurants. Many of our friends have left Indian Trail and gone to that area for those reasons. I love that we have things like the Viva Chicken, Fruitable, Unique Boutique, and the movie theater within walking distance. Now maybe we need some more little boutiques, shops, sit-down restaurants, along with a nice common area. Bring families together. We love going to downtown Waxaw, Blakeney, Stonecrest, and the Promenade, especially when our kids were small. We could go and enjoy a decent meal with having a drink and listening to music while our kids could play. This was not just our family, but many of our neighbors. This area is filled with families. Why would this not work here? I've been told it wouldn't. That would actually increase our home values and increase the values of others' homes, apartments, et cetera, all in the area. It would draw people here. We have had many of our friends and neighbors leave Indian Trail to go to Waxaw-Weddington and Ballantyne, because we do not have the shopping, sit-down restaurants as they do. Why not bring that here and keep the money in our community, increase our property values here in Indian Trail? Bowling is great, but that's not the land for it. There are much better suited areas for this that are not by single-family homes. On a property that is zoned to be mixed use and is too small for the project, Providence Spring Elementary School holds family nights all the time over at the Promenade. Wouldn't something along those lines be better suited right by two elementary schools, a middle school and a high school? I have a lot of friends in the neighborhood that would love something like that. I've seen numerous times on the Nextdoor app, people asking why Indian Trail does not have sit-down restaurants or decent shopping. This town has enough fast food restaurant, dollar store, et cetera. What we need to bring is more little shops, sit-down restaurants, and common areas with fountains, little concerts, et cetera. Make this Indian Trail's four corners. I understand that you want to sell your land, but you don't have to sell it to build a bowling alley. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Freeman?
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you again for allowing us to speak. I won't take the whole three minutes, I don't think. I just want to make a couple of additional comments. One is, the seller doesn't have a dog in this fight. Seller can sell to whomever they wish. Their interest is not at stake here. It's the interest of the homeowners who already exist in an established subdivision. Their views will be destroyed, and there is no getting past the crime that is associated with bowling alleys and taverns. It's not the same as a movie theater. And I ask you to not vote on this tonight until you have looked up and found somewhere in North Carolina or anywhere where there's a successful bowling alley adjacent to a residential area, and the crime hasn't been a problem. I did the research, and I could not find it. I found three articles in North Carolina that involved horrible crimes, solicitation of pornography from children, bowling alleys here in North Carolina in the past year, murders, beatings, gangs, all sorts of things like that in suburban bowling alleys around the country. I sent these articles to council. Please look at this. Please do some research. This is not the same as a movie theater. An eight-foot wall or a six-foot wall and a berm and a bunch of trees are not going to prevent this. Thank you.
Lisa Baxter?
Hello, thank you for hearing me tonight. I stand before you and ask the same as everybody else.
Microphone, move the microphone. We can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that better?
Yep.
Okay. I'm asking that you deny the request for the conditional rezoning at the property of 6400 Old Monroe Road. The plan for the bowling alley, which may have changed, but any establishment that has, that sells alcohol right behind our house with a 50-foot berm from our backyards, where our children play, where we want to put in swimming pools, where we want to do anything and have privacy, that's going to be severely impacted by having any type of entertainment establishment back there, or any establishment that sells alcohol that close to our homes. And I do believe that there will be increased crime. I do believe there'll be increased vandalism, break-ins, and unsupervised minors hanging out all times of the night, possibly jumping a wall, maybe not. And that's just some of the things that I can think of off the top of my head. This shopping center is so close. We like to be in our backyards for family gatherings, for our children to play, to have, just have our coffee in the morning, and hang out at night and relax, calm, quiet, peaceful. And all this is going to be disrupted. Some of the houses on Spanish Moss Road are actually three stories. So they're going to have a very clear view of this bowling alley or any large facility that's really going to impact our value of our home, and it's going to be a huge financial impact to my family. I don't want to feel afraid to live. I don't want to feel afraid that there's going to be a huge increase in crime, especially after what I just heard. I want to feel safe in my home. In this project, anything that will sell alcohol is going to severely impact our way of life. So I sit here, and I understand the need for progressive development in Union County and in Indian Trail, but it doesn't need to have a business selling alcohol this close to our homes where we raise our families. I ask if the rezoning goes through, that there is some sort of restriction on the establishment that can be put behind our homes, that it completely restricts any use or sales or service of alcohol. This restriction must be enforceable as business turnover as well. Please protect our families, that we work so hard to maintain our lifestyle, and we ask for your support. And please say no to this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you. Janelle Bosneck? Hope I pronounced that correctly.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for letting all of us speak here tonight. We're here today to express our deep concerns regarding the Sun Valley substation as it's currently proposed. Some of the concerns have already been addressed here and at the conclusion of recent meetings here at the town hall. At this point, we are unfortunately reserved to the fact that in some form, this project will move forward. We are adamantly opposed to it, as the noise, lights will undoubtedly affect our property values. Many of our neighbors feel this way as well, as you can tell of those of us who are here tonight, and have stated that if this project moves forward, they may sell their homes and move to other areas where they have the restaurants and the shops that we don't have here in Indian Trail. The barriers, as proposed, are, at the very least, inadequate. A chain-link fence does not provide a barrier. We talked about now a wall, six-foot wall. Most men can look over the top of a six-foot wall. Need to put a higher eight-foot wall there. And not only will privacy be ensured, but it does little if anything to provide security to the proposed neighboring homeowners. The residents of Spanish Moss Road have already been subjected to crime, ranging from petty theft to auto theft. A vehicle was broken into the front of our home the first week that we moved here. And there's recently been several cars broken into on our streets, and our neighbor across the street had his car stolen. Additional crime is most certainly not needed, and having a fence that does nothing to prevent it is unacceptable. A solid noise-dampening and trespasser-stopping wall is the only solution. Anyone can climb a six-foot tall fence. Needs to be substantial. Equally as insulting is the proposed dirt mound. As submitted, this will do absolutely nothing. A three-foot mound of dirt with immature trees will in no way provide a visual or sound barrier. Behind our home is a dirt mound, which is 10 to 12 feet tall with evergreen trees. This provides our yard with a visual and physical screen to Mustang Drive, reduces traffic noise, and is aesthetically pleasing. In our opinion, is far more realistic in regards to performance. Surely, a commercial developer, whose primary business it is to build properties, can make a dirt pile. We completely understand that the current property owner has the right to sell the property, and to think that it would not be developed in some manner is unrealistic. However, to construct a commercial building having minimal visual and noise barriers that backs immediately up to the residence of Spanish Moss Road will negatively affect our property values. To think otherwise is not realistic. As to the businesses that are being proposed to go into this development, during the initial meeting at the library, we were told there would be a family fun center that would encompass a couple of bowling lanes and a variety of other family fun activities, as well as a gym and a pet store. At a recent meeting in town hall, we left with the impression that standalone bowling alley would be on the property. Clarity as to the proposed businesses would be appreciated. However, the greater concern...
Thank you. Kat Miller.
Hi. Thank you for having me. I'm not going to go over what most of the other people have said already, so I probably won't take up my three minutes either. So, I'm here to tell you to vote no for this. I have a little confusion, because I thought typically when any rezoning went into from residential to whatever you're calling this now, mixed-use commercial, that it went to the Board of Adjustments first. This has not come up to that. And last year or the year before, either this property or another property very similar to it did come up to the Board of Adjustments to put up townhomes there. That was denied just because it didn't meet the U D O, whatever the requirements for Indian Trail at that time. So, I'm really confused why this change of residential to now commercial use has not come up to the Board of Adjustments, because typically when it goes through the Board of Adjustments, appraisals are done for all neighboring homes and everything. That has not been done. So, I don't know why Moser's been given privilege to sidestep. If you can all, like, enlighten me as to why the process has changed for some individuals and not for other individuals, because it should be the same for any developer. The process should definitely be the same. My second concern is, we have already Sun Valley Commons, we have where the high school is, and we have the three corners there, which is all retail business. If you look there, we have a lot of empty spaces there. And if you go down 74 in Indian Trail, there's a lot of empty retail businesses. We don't want empty, you know, retail behind us. Keep it residential. If they want to put this, there's plenty of existing space to redo. If you go right down the road, about five miles to the Monroe N C D Movie Theater, in that complex there, the Harris Teeter pulled out, that's an empty building now, perfect for a bowling alley. Go to the movies, go bowling, you know, dinner out. Perfect space for that. This is not, I think, a bowling alley, and all this belongs on 74. And once again, please go over the process with me about changing from residential to now commercial, mixed-use, because it seems to have bypassed me, is why this developer gets their own privilege in changing the rules. So, vote no, please. Thank you. And you're, like, elected. We elect you all. You're appointed or elected. For us, the residents of Indian Trail, not one developer. And I know their sign is all over town, but, you know, it's the residents who you should be backing. So, our safety, our concern, and let's keep Indian Trail nice, Indian Trail. Thank you.
Mike Toth.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'll be brief and not repetitive of some of the other points that I've already made, and I feel concerned with, too. Want to start just by mentioning a few addresses here. These are all bowling alleys in the Charlotte area, six of which I've attended. I think roughly 10 right now in the Charlotte area, but Bolero Matthews, AMF University Lanes, Sports Connection, Audrey Kell, 10 Park Lanes and Monford Drive off of Park Road, AMF Centennial Lane, South Boulevard, and Bolero Charlotte, which is off of Trade Street. As I said, I've attended each one of these over the last 20 years we have lived here. I bowl for recreation as well as in league bowling. So, I'm a bowler. I enjoy the sport. I'm currently in a league created through my employer. We bowl every Tuesday night at AMF University Lanes. Goes without saying, I enjoy the sport. I'm not against this project for the town of Indian Trail. I'm against this project being 50 feet from my home. I pulled maps of each one of these, tried to look at the proximity between each one of these bowling alleys. The four I also did not attend, I couldn't find one that was within a half a mile from a residential section. As I begin to think back, the bowling that I've done over the years, everywhere I've lived, I can't come up with one that even comes close to residential sections. I guess I'd ask, think back to when you grew up, or where you've lived, or whatever, if bowling was ever a sport that you enjoyed, recreational or otherwise. They're where they are for a reason. It's as simple as that. Noise pollution, potential crime, property value issues, I share sentiment with everyone else. I'm the individual that had their car stolen, January 31st of 2018. I don't want to experience that again. Please vote no.
Judy Wooton.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm the homeowner. I've lived in Indian Trail my whole life. Some of you probably, there might be a few people in this room can remember when, like, where I lived, there's only, was about four or five houses. And the only other thing was Pickett Henson's Grocery Store and the old Cotton Jean down at the hill. So, it's just... We built that house in 1976, moved in '77. The rest of the land there was, we inherited from my parents. They had lived their biggest part of their married life. We've paid taxes on that property for years. When Brandon Oaks was planned, we didn't like it. We didn't want somebody in our backyard, but we didn't say anything because we know that's progress. Things are going to change. They're not going to stay the same. Just like when the Old Monroe Road becomes four-lane. I don't know many people that was going to want to live on that road once it's a four-lane road. But, you know, we're just trying, we're at that time in our life when we want less responsibility, less upkeep, and just decided that we'd see if we could sell the house. I really think that this is a good project. I think Dennis Moser will do an excellent job, just like he did across the road at the movie theaters. I think he is trying his best to meet as many requirements as the people from Brandon Oaks has asked for that he possibly can. And I just ask that you would consider approving this. Thank you.
Robert Baxter.
Earlier this week, I sent a letter to the council. I was going to read it in part tonight. To the members of Indian Town Council, as a property owner and taxpayer in the town of Indian Trail, I write this letter to express my disapproval of the zone change, C Z 2019-0045, located at 6,400 Old Monroe Road, specifically to propose shopping center in the application. My main complaint is the proximity of the building to the existing residences in Spanish Moss. It has been suggested by the developer applying for this change that it fits in the division of the Conditional Zoning District, the overlay and the Unified Development Ordinance, adopted by the town council in 2008. The U D O's understanding of the need for a structured and economic balance of residential and business development should not make it a foregone conclusion that this should be approved because it fits into a template, and that it was approved by the town council 11 years ago, or because the project might fit into the minimum standards of C Z requirements. It also does not mean it satisfies the U D O. We realize the U D O has been amended over the years, but the underlying framework is still the same. The zoning change is not the primary concern, rather, the project itself. Therefore, to use this as an argument, there are several things that have to be taken into consideration. In the U D O, Chapter 110 dot 020, titled Authority Under Purpose, specifically 110 dot 020B, there are several bullet points that apply to this decision. B1, Protecting and Promoting the Public Health, Safety, and General Welfare. If approved, there's no way you're protecting, or voting to protect and promote the public health, safety, and general welfare by approving a commercial structure in such proximity to the residents, approximately 100 feet from the structure to the living areas. B3, Enhancing the Resident's Quality of Life. If the plan is approved, there's no comprehensible way you can assure us that you're enhancing the quality of life, at least for the residents of Spanish Moss. B4, Protecting Character of Established Residential Neighborhoods. Again, if approved, there's no clear and logical way you'll be protecting the character of an established neighborhood, actually be degrading the character. B9, Maintain an Orderly and Compatible Development Patterns That Promote an Appropriate Mix of Land Use and Protect and Preserve Property Values. If the project's approved, there's no conceivable way that it protects or preserves our property values, actually to the contrary. There are several bullet points that also talk about promoting commercial development. That is why it is incumbent on the current sitting council to consider the framework of the original document and determine if the project is protecting and preserving of the resident's quality of life or that of the developer. I heard in a planning and zoning meeting last year, the development's argument that the plan he was proposing was his vision for the Sun Valley area and Indian Trail in general. Well, you have to decide tonight is whose vision of Indian Trail you stand for, the residents...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. This one I can't understand. Brendan Shepro? Did I get that right?
You did. Thank you.
All right.
My condolences to this house and your husband. Thank you for listening to me. I come in here to speak in favor of the proposed rezoning change for 6,400 Old Monroe Road. And I've heard a few comments tonight, and I respectfully listen to everybody, and I understand their position. But there are also, my understanding is that the homeowner has a real interest in this, and that's the Wooton family has a real interest in this as well. Like they said, they moved into that property in 1976, were built in '76, and they also saw what went on behind them. And now there's, you know, those properties, you folks, I mean, beautiful homes back there, and it's overlooking their property, and they respectfully lived with them as neighbors. And this opportunity comes up for Indian Trail where it's going to put a bowling alley in there, which, in their backyard, yes, that's correct. However, let's talk about what bowling alleys do. Now, we hear a lot of bad things about bowling alleys, but bowling is the number-one participation sport in United States of America, 67 million people. It also, it has a lot of educational benefits. We have three schools, four schools, pardon me, directly within walking distance of this property. There's 588 at Shawah Valley Primary. There's 587 kids at Shawah Valley Elementary. Sun Valley Middle has 1,148 kids. Sun Valley High School has 1,473 kids. So, those numbers alone dictate that these kids have things to do. Yes, we have police officers that can handle, that that's their job, to promote public safety. And that's, of course, government's number-one concern, is public safety, correct? That's what I feel. So, that is something that will be addressed. It has to. The Moser Group is also offering to provide additional security at the area. Nobody wants these folks to feel like they're getting squished in their homes. We all have, we're all homeowners, most of us anyhow. But, this is a really good project, and they've had other projects, but this one really, it serves a lot of purposes. It's contiguous with the property across the street, which was developed, and it's a, and there's a lot of these, me included, use this often, because it does offer restaurants, it's got entertainment, and this is called the Entertainment District, this area. So, that just provides an extension of the Entertainment District. Now, one other thing is, the land use plan, yes, it's being adjusted to accommodate some other, this development. But, comprehensive land use plan, which, it's the process of regulating the use of land in an effort to promote more desirable social and environmental outcomes for all of its citizens, all of its citizens in the area. And a discussion, this discussion conforms exactly to Indian Trail's plans, and offers a positive, healthy option. Harris Teeter sells alcohol. There's three or four bars across the street there. I mean, that's, I understand you folks need...
Thank you. Debbie Perry.
Hi. My name is Debbie Perry, and in 2011, we bought our home down here in Brandon Oaks. We came from a small town in Corning, New York. We thought we were coming into our, kind of our same development. Since 2011, the flavor of Brandon Oaks has really changed. It's growing, you know, and the progress, I understand all that. But it's just, if you want the small-town feel, that's going by the wayside, and it's really sad because the people around here are really great, and I just wish it would stay like that. The people that I feel sorry for are the people in Brandon, uh, Spanish Moss and Brandon Oaks. I live in Brandon Oaks, but not in Spanish Moss. I can't imagine looking out, looking out at my home and seeing a 40-foot building, you know, that if I won't go out my backyard all the time, I'm going to see that. Six-foot wall, okay, you're going to have that, and I don't understand why they won't go from at least a six to an eight. I know it's a dollar sign, but it's, from even eight-foot wall, you're going to see a building, you know, and it's, when you go out your back lawn, you want that feeling of privacy, that if you want a real estate, you don't have people, you know, it's just, it's different like that. I feel their home values will decrease. I don't know how it can't. They were saying, I saw on the board today, an access from Spanish Moss through the building or over there. Why would you need an access from Spanish Moss to the new building? Get in a car, drive around. That's, I mean, they can't go through the back lawns anyway. Why, that's a private property. So, where would this access point be? I don't know, so I can't, you know, talk anymore on that. When we went to the planning board meeting on the November 11th, you know, they had, they had agreed to do a 35-foot, and the planning board, you know, was saying that they wanted a, they would like to see a 50-foot, you know, setback, an eight-foot solid wall, and the trees that were going to be put on, the trees would be facing the homeowners. I've never heard anyone say, okay, from the property line, the people's property line and the wall, those trees are in there. Who's going to take care of them? Trees die, things grow up. I mean, is, who's, who's, who's is that going to fall back onto? You know, I just, I wonder about that. But I just, I know progress is going to go on. My gut reaction is this is going to go through. I feel sorry for the people of Spanish Moss, because I think...
Thank you. Do you need a break now? Okay. I'm going to call a three-minute bathroom break.
We're not...
Okay. So, everybody went quiet down. We're going to reconvene.
You want to speak?
This time, public comment was closed. I'm going to ask Ms. Moser to come back up. I'm sure there's questions, which I'm going to field first. Before you speak, I'd like to address the attorney as to Ms. Miller's Board of Adjustment accusation.
Right. No, this, the land development process is confusing, so I understand how confusion can happen, and it's easy, it's confusing until you're in it regularly. There are three ways to obtain a land use right in Indian Trail. One is administrative, and that is done by staff. The second is through a quasi-judicial process. That is the one that you would think of going through the Z B A. There are some, it's called a conditional use permit, so there are some land uses that will go through a, basically almost a trial, a semi-trial, and that is usually involves the Z B A, or sometimes the town council would participate in that. What we are doing today is a conditional zoning process, which is legislative. And so, that is a... so that is a council decision that permits the input of the public, of the developer, of experts in the field to, so that everybody can come together and can, and zone a particular parcel by agreement. And this is three ways that are allowed under this, in the state of North Carolina, and conditional zoning is what we see the most here. And again, like I said, it's a legislative process where the final decision is a new ordinance in the town of Indian Trail, which is the zoning for a particular piece of property. This process includes community meetings, a hearing in front of the planning board, public hearings here in front of council, and then a vote by council.
Thank you. I'm going to also address, before I give the mic back over to council, some of the notes that I've taken down. Ms. Moser, this has been suggested of many different things here, and for the record, are you planning access through that back, an additional access point?
No.
Has it ever been considered?
No.
Okay.
And our engineer is also here, Bowler Engineering, that can help answer any questions.
Okay, there's engineering question. And this is still a fun center, not an AMF lanes with 48 lanes and typical bowling alley? Everybody keeps saying bowling alley, but what was proposed to us was a multi-use family fun center.
What the proposed use is, a family fun center. The Jacobs are here, Claudia and Myron, who are wanting to do the family fun center. That could speak more about that if you would like, but yes, nothing has changed on the plans.
Nothing has changed from the original plan you presented. Does council need her to go over that one more time?
Sure.
Okay, Ms. Jacobs, would you step forward, please?
So we're proposing a multifaceted family fun center or family entertainment center, which bowling will be one of the, what they call attractions. We are also contemplating putting in a laser tag arena, arcade games, and bumper cars. So it'll be four attractions initially, you know, once we open. So the whole concept of a, it won't be a single, just bowling alley, like you mentioned, just won't not be just bowling. It will, bowling will just be one component of it.
And while you're up there, correct me if I'm wrong, you're already business owners in Indian Trail?
Correct.
You have a vested interest in the success of a business?
Oh, yes.
Correct.
And we live in Indian Trail.
And we live in Indian Trail.
And maintaining its safety and its aesthetics?
Absolutely.
Correct.
Okay, but does council have a question for Mr. Morse? You had, your hand up first.
Will there be alcohol served?
Yes.
Define beer and wine?
Yes.
Only?
At this point, beer and wine only, but we may decide to bring in liquor as well.
By going through the proper processes?
Right.
Okay. Ms. Morse, did you have another question?
No.
Mr. Head? Did you have a question?
Mike, forgive me. So is this all that's gonna be in there, or is it just the one section?
In our particular piece?
So it's, it's like three different pieces, right?
Well, the, Mackenzie can speak to it, but to my understanding, it, you know, the Sun Valley Station will have three, kind of, retail pieces.
Right.
The family fun center, the pet supply store, and the fitness center.
And so you're just talking about the family fun center?
We're just talking about the family, we're only here representing the family fun center.
We're good. That's what I, that's what I was trying to find out.
While they're up at the mic, did any other council members have a question for Jacobs? No, thank you. Ms. Moser? The other contentious matter is the height of a proposed barrier.
Sure.
During the break, you proposed another option?
Sure. And if I can also address some of these comments, I do think that some of the facts have, are not there, that I just want to go over a few things on the site plan that I think will address some of the questions or issues. And in an effort to accommodate the Spanish Moss, Brandon Oaks residents' concerns, we've tried to incorporate as many of their suggestions as possible. So from the, from the beginning, the U D O suggests the 25-foot barrier, but we actually have increased that significantly, and instead of a three-foot berm, we've done the five-foot berm. The fence we've, or, I'm sorry, the fence or the wall, which is what Mayor Alvarez is speaking of, is what we could do there is an eight-foot solid fence or a six-foot solid wall. Like, at Sun Valley is the wall, and then the eight-foot solid fence, we could do it of composite, cannot see through. There are different materials that you can use for that, but for the eight-foot, we could do the solid fence, if there is clarification.
During the break, Mr. Moser, you had mentioned the composite would be made of PVC, and that if any portion of it were to be damaged, you would fix it immediately. So that was to clarify that part of the other options that were brought up from the questions that I had heard from some of the speakers.
So we've increased the distance from the property line, added the fence or wall, whichever is requested, increased the berm height, the tree save area. We've, the parking lot and the building site light fixtures, which were mentioned, shall be shielded and in positions such that light does not trespass on adjacent residential properties, and that's as per the U D O.
All right, council, we're gonna start. Mr. Head, do you have any questions for?
So how many parking spaces are, because I know when this was originally talked about, I guess, probably, forgive me. When this was originally talked about, we talked about having no parking spaces behind other than for, you know, the food, whatever, the normal activity to, to service those. But now I'm seeing, what I saw was a lot more, there are some on the back and some on the sides.
I'm, I'm gonna have Mike Theberg with Bowler speak on the parking spaces, the building height, and any of those questions.
Evening, everybody. How are you doing? Don't need to give my address or anything?
No, just state your name before you speak.
Sounds good. Mike Theberg, Mint Hill. Like Mackenzie had mentioned, you'd, you'd brought up, Mike, the, the parking on the one part of the site that's tucked behind the building, is that, I think, what kind of you were referring to, that, that area just for the people that are working there, you know, needing to, you know, needing to park there for, you know, employment and the people that are there that are, you know, delivering food or delivering goods or that kind of thing. That, that's the purpose of that, of that space.
Forty-seven parking spaces on the side and the back?
There's the, the back corner. Can we pull up a plan? I'm sorry. Just wanna make sure I'm pointing at the same thing that you're pointing at there. That's all. And that's the, there we go, yeah. So, yeah, so, yeah, so this, this area was intended as the, the employee-only area. This, this area would, you know, in, I guess in my mind was separate from that, because it was more there and to the side of the building, to your point, and, you know, more for the people that are using that, that potential use there. Which ones were you referring to? I'm sorry.
Well, I was, yes, and then on the opposite side over here, right there.
So over here, I mean, some, some of the, I guess the U D O goals talk about trying to split up larger parking fields into different areas, so that as you're, you're at the site, you're not necessarily just looking at a sea of parking, that you've got features like this coming through the site with sidewalk and green space, and that you've got other areas where it's evenly distributed. This type of, you know, family fun center also, you know, can often have, you know, potentially a corner entry, and then you're, you're distributing that a little bit more evenly around it. Doing, doing this also allows us to keep the buildings further away from the back by splitting this parking up, instead of having to keep pushing the parking up to here and pushing the buildings back. So that was, you know, a, a design process to try to look at ways to keep, you know, this line held. That was discussed, which was about the 40, you know, the 40 feet roughly of, of area back here between the tree save and the berm. That was kind of driving a lot of it, and then led to some of the shape of this parking. And we did increase that from, I think, the original plan by maybe 10 to 12 or so feet from the first submission that we made to later submissions in, in response to some of the concerns, and that also may have led to some of the other minor revisions to the parking layout.
Any more questions? Mr. Morse?
No, not right now.
Ms. Morse?
This, this may be from, more so from Mr. Moser, but it, it seems that there's a lot of concern regarding, you know, the eight-foot wall, and I think that's more of a visual, because as someone said, you know, someone who's six-foot tall can, can pull themselves up there and look over and do whatever. The eight-foot wall that you're proposing, is this like a vinyl-type wall?
That's one of the, it's not necessarily vinyl, it's, it's one of those com, more composite material walls, you know. Trex is a brand name that you might hear, it can have different patterns on it. It's, it's not a, it's not the flimsy, you know, plastic that you might be thinking of there on the vinyl. It's more of a, it's a solid, it's opaque, you cannot see through it, and to the point in that option, you could get it up to that eight-foot height.
How does that compare to a solid brick wall that's similar to Sun Valley as far as noise? To dampen the noise?
I mean, my, my, my opinion is at, that at this distance from the building and the fact that you're already have the building structure itself enclosing most of the noise, I couldn't, I couldn't imagine a noticeable difference. Plus, when you're dealing with noise, you're looking at, you know, the noise traveling through there and kind of that, and angles, so that the height, to me at least, is gonna block that noise more than the, the thickness of the wall, you know, outdoors, you know. If it's already, if the noise, you know, is already, you know, outside, somebody talking in the parking lot, it's more the height of that wall that's gonna project that noise up in the air and away from the residences than the thickness or the material.
Would, would Mr. Moser consider an eight-foot solid wall that's similar to Sun Valley Commons?
What we'll consider is the eight-foot solid fence or a six-foot solid wall, like Sun Valley Commons. The eight-foot solid fence would actually allow for not as much disturbance at, of the trees, for the tree save area. A wall, you're bringing tractors back there, you're gonna have to clear portions to do the drilling to make that wall happen. With an eight-foot solid fence opaque, would be a good solution to get the height, save the trees, and allow the no trespassing back and forth.
Regarding the, and I think that's probably an upside, a benefit there, less disturbance. The, the berm and the, the type of plants that are, are put there, has there been any consideration of using something like Leyland cypress or something that's an evergreen, that is a tall-growing, that would also serve as a buffer?
The plan as submitted has a, a double row of, of evergreens. I don't know the specific, I don't know that the type exactly were called out on there, but they were intended to be that type of taller-growing evergreen that was, you know, like I said, a double row on top of, you know, near the top of that berm.
Could that, could that be a, a condition of approval, to have a certain type of planting there, so it's not just 10-foot evergreens, that they would be substantial, 30-foot or whatever?
They're Deodore Cedars. Deodore Cedars, evergreens?
That's the plan that they're proposing. Thank you.
Mr. Barber? Any questions? No? Ms. Hal?
Where you to go?
Ms. McIntyre?
I do have one, but I wanna yield my time to Mr. Sedik in a, in a second. In regards to the, the trees that you just mentioned?
Yes, sir.
I know that we've, we've talked about, a lot, a lot about evergreens, and I'm, I have a couple at home, and they're dying. Some of those are, I think the...
Leyland cypress?
Yeah, I think these are man-made or genetically modified, and therefore they have a lifespan of about 10 to 15 years. So the tree that you just mentioned, I can't pronounce the name, but is that a concern in that it'll die off within 15 years? Because 15 years is a long time for a tree to grow. You don't wanna just lose it. If you plant it now, you wanna make sure it's permanent and it grows tall. So the tree that you just mentioned, the name which I will not try to pronounce, is that tree gonna last past that? Is it susceptible to diseases? Is it something that's gonna die out? That's the question that I, I'm really asking here.
Sure. It, it's Deodore Cedars, and no, there are not issues like that. If there are issues, we would take the responsibility to fix them.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sedik, sir.
On the trees, the height, the height of the trees, Mackenzie, what would they be?
At planting, they're eight to 10 feet, but they grow to, and I don't wanna tell you wrong.
Okay.
So I'm gonna ask this question. Do you all know? They're 30 to 50 feet.
Okay.
Can someone pull up a picture of one?
DEO?
Of the, of that particular tree?
Deodore Cedar?
D E O.
All right, come on, Todd.
Is there a nice one? You're a nice one.
I'll, I'll come around to you guys.
Okay. Yeah, I don't wanna drop his phone, I don't have that much money.
Another, the other thing I just, I guess I just mentioned is that with that eight to 10 feet, is it be placed near the top of that five-foot berm? It can't be right at the top, there's a double row of them, but it's, you know, you're gonna, effectively then you're getting...
More height?
More height at planting than that. You know, you're looking at 14, you know,-ish foot-tall trees at planting, which are then non-destroyed to the existing tree save that's back there for the much more mature trees.
Yes, Mr. Head, one more.
One more question. Where would the berm be located? Is it just along the back, or is it gonna be on the side? Show me where the berm would end up being.
The intent was, I mean, to your point, there, since that was, you know, I think there was a thought to curl it, you know, to there, and to curl it, you know, to there, you know, just, you know, to continue that up a, a bit. I think, I think the, the fence was at least, you know, at least again in that, in that area, so about...
It's 300 feet additional for the fence?
I get 300 feet for whom's?
And forgive me, but is the, the fence gonna be on the outside of the berm?
The fence would be along the property line, and then it's the tree save and then the berm.
It's the only way that we can maintain, and we did look into switching, but the only way to maintain the wall, the berm, the plants, is to have it in front of the wall instead on, on the other side of the property.
You're also getting more, one, there was a concern brought up of how these trees would be maintained. If, if the fence is on this side of the existing trees, then it's gonna be much more difficult for them to maintain those existing trees in there. And then you're also, if, if that fence is pushed up against the property line, you're not gonna be, it's gonna better screen the development from neighbors, it's gonna be closer to the, to the homes. You're pushing it back 30 feet, effectively becomes a smaller fence visually, everyone is back.
How far back from the property line, like six inches, six feet, is there, ish, in that area? In that, okay.
And one additional thing that hasn't been mentioned that I believe should be mentioned is, there is a power easement on the, all of the adjacent homes. So that's a 30-foot easement from the property line on each of the...
Can you use the pointer?
Uh, yes, I can.
Thank you.
Running along the property line?
Running along the property line, there's an additional 30-foot easement. So the power line 30-foot easement is there, and then our property line begins, then the wall or fence, then the evergreen berm, all of that. So that was an additional 30-foot that has not been... So that was an additional thirty-foot that has not been said.
Any other last-minute questions? If not...
Mr. Sedik?
Mr. Sedik, oh, Mr. Sedik, sorry.
It's okay.
I left you out.
What I'd like to do for a few minutes, I just want to make sure, share with council and the audience and the people that live in the neighborhood, kind of summarize all your feedback and also the feedback that we received during the public hearing, the planning committee, and during the workshop. And I'll, I'll make it as, as quick as I can. We've received a lot of comments in support and against. I'd like to start with the wall. If the wall is solid, made out of brick, it will do a better job than other wall, if, wall if it's not brick. Usually sound travels in wave, hits a wall, bump over it, then land on the homes that within two hundred feet. Then it dissipates based on the volume where it starts. Please keep in mind that this structure, I'm not sure the entire length of the building, will act as a barrier for any traffic noise that we get right now from Monroe or later on when it becomes four-lane roadway. In regard to the wall, the wall will do a better job on top of the berm because you're getting more height. The higher the wall, the better it is. I'm not advocating that the, the developer should do that. I just like you guys to know, the developer know and council know, what's better than other. In regard to the mature trees, we received a lot of emails in regard to having mature trees. And we've heard, I think, the developer is willing to put landscaping on either side of the berm. The utility easement that exists there, I think it doesn't need to be touched because we have some mature trees that could act as a buffer too. So whatever the developer is proposing, in addition, if we maintain those trees in there, I think it will do a better buffer for the neighborhood and also will isolate this business from the neighborhood. In regard to the buffer, by the UDO, they're required to have twenty-five feet. The developer is willing to put eighteen more feet to put the berm and the wall. We would like to see, if this development takes over, we would like to see construction of the wall to be first. And the reason why is they build the wall, then construction of the building takes over, then it isolate the sound and the noise a little bit from your homes. So that is something I think maybe the developer could make happen. We've, we've received emails in regard to delivery time, that, you know, some restrictions should be put on delivery time. We also received emails in regard to operating hours. You know, some residents suggested that there should be operating hours for the business. Again, please try to understand, our job is to make sure to share with all of you guys, including council, all the comments that we received and also what we think about each comment. We also received comments about dumpster and, you know, picking up and not picking up. Again, they, the developer will put it at the right place that accommodate their need. So I'm not sure if they'd be willing to relocate that, but if you handle the sound and the noise problem, I think you, you don't have to worry too much about the locations of the dumpsters. In regard to cars parking in the back, I don't think, if a car comes in and park, I don't think it will cause too much noise as much as that noise you're going to hear from Monroe Road. That's, that noise, you're going to hear it. Back to the buffer, so they provided the buffer required, they provided eighteen feet. We've heard from some residents that they like to see the planting on either side of the berm and also the wall to be on top of the berm. The berm, if the developer installed a solid wall on top of the berm, that will cost a lot of money. And also the foundation of that wall within the berm, it'll be a very big ticket item for the developer. So I just like everybody to know that. Very easy to say, I want ten-foot wall on top of a berm. That berm is fresh, but you have to start the foundation first, back up, backfill around it and then build the wall. All these things that they have to occur during the construction of this project. So lands, we heard landscaping on both sides and similar to the trees that we said. People said they want evergreen, they like to see evergreen and also something similar to what, what Mrs. Moser mentioned. Definitely retain as much pas- as, as much as possible the existing medic- vegetation because it does help the sound barrier. And the utility line, as far, as far as I know, utility companies have the right to go in there, repair that line. So by them creating that buffer, it really makes sense because if we have a tornado or a storm, some of those lines they drop, that utility company needs to go there and repair them. And most of the time they wipe out the vegetation too, but I'm not going to get in into too much detail. But also we received some comments about that too. All right. If this project does not get built, well, we might, we might get an apartment, we might get townhome, mixed use, does have multi-story. Imagine also those high stories looking at your backyard. So it's both ways. Also, you might have light nuisance from the balcony, you might have noise. And definitely the parking lot for those buildings going to be next to those buildings, I mean, right there. So I'm not worried too much about that parking in the back because other uses, Mr. Head, might cause the same thing. I think, I think with the wall and the vegetation and the existing vegetation in the wall, I think you will not see too much of that forty-foot. But again, please keep in mind that multi-use building or apartment or townhomes, they're much higher than that. They could go up to four stories if it comes in in the future. Monroe Road is going to be widened. I mentioned that in a public meeting one time. The construction of it's going to be out there for two, three years. It's going to have a tremendous impact on Sun Valley Commons, the intersection and also your homes out there in the neighborhood because you're the closest to that. So again, whatever buffer is there could help that. Just bear with me, one last item. Our town, and our finance director is here, we do survive of our edulorum tax and our sales tax. We outsource a lot of services to Union County, solid waste and water and sewer and all that. So that's, that's, that is our income. We would like to see another sport coming into Indian Trail. Across the street, you could see, we almost have about thirteen of them right now, that no jurisdiction in Charlotte metropolitan has that sport facility, including the ice, uh, extreme ice, striker soccer, and now the bowling alley's coming in. So for staff, we do support businesses like that, regardless to the buildings and the noise and et cetera, et cetera. Just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. But I, that's the summary of what we received from all of you, from the consultant, from the developer, what everybody's willing to do. And I wanted to share that with you and council tonight. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer it.
Mr. Morse?
I appreciate you stating all that. And for myself, if I was to vote in favor of approving this, I would like some of those things to be a condition of the approval, like the solid wall. That was why I asked that question, what, what protects this, you know, bounces the sound back better? Putting the solid wall on that berm. But I want to make sure that we can do that, put this in as part of the conditions of this rezoning. And how would we go about that? We have to decide that before we actually take the votes?
Again, conditional zoning is a zoning by agreement. And so both the Moser group can present any suggestions that they like, would like. The town can present any we would like. Nothing will happen unless we all agree. And so that would be the process that we would go through now. It is not my favorite process. If that is the, the, the feel of council, what I would recommend is that we continue this, we continue this hearing and we allow the Moser and council and the town staff to address some of these potential conditions that we can speak to tonight and bring it back. I do not want to write a whole new ordinance here sitting at the dais. So that would be my suggestion or recommendation.
What are you suggesting?
I think the lady spoke.
That being said, I don't know, but we don't know, nobody said anything.
This is up to council what they do.
It's absolutely up to council. And again, like I said, that, that, we, I don't, we, nothing's been said. So I don't know what, what everyone's thinking up here. If it's something simple, like, you know, hey, would you agree to a ten P M. close and a seven A M. open? Then, and they can agree, that's an easy one. I, I, so I, we just need to get a little more information about what is actually in people's heads right here before we can go that direction, so.
Does council feel that we can address all these issues this evening and give it the appropriate amount of thought and discussion? And then, you know, be able to go to the presenters here and, and negotiate this?
Council can vote on that. If council so chooses, let them vote and then we go. Many vote on whether you want to add amendments or you want to just go ahead and vote right now.
Because, you know, personally, I didn't have any really thoughts about the operating hours so much, but that, that is a good point.
But I, don't, we have a, in the town, certain hours that businesses can operate, start and finish. We do, right? That, that's within, in other words, we don't have businesses that can... Sorry, thank you, Randy.
That's okay. Councilman McIntyre, the Unified Development Ordinance speaks of it, a, a little vague, but it talks about the surrounding uses and being consistent with the surrounding uses. So you see some, some later hours there, ten, eleven P M. when we've surveyed that area, but it would have to be consistent with the surrounding.
Right. So what other, okay.
Let me field this, okay, before this gets too dragged in. Mackenzie, please take the podium. You may be talking about exactly what she's already spoken about or may not to address council. It's a little confusing. You've offered two types of fencing, a six-foot wall or an eight-foot composite.
And there are pros or cons to each with the solid fence. You still have the barrier, they cannot look through. It is taller and does not disturb the trees. With a wall, you are having to get tractors back there, you are having to do a lot of work. So those very mature trees, some of that would, for a wall to go there, you would have to make way for the equipment and the work to be done for a wall. And we're willing to do either that you suggest of the six-foot wall or the eight-foot solid fence.
Yes, and I guess that my question then would be, what does council, what would council be comfortable with? Is it a six-foot solid wall on the berm or eight-foot wall?
What, did you say on the berm? Was it, was the fence on the berm?
The berm...
It's the trees that are on the berm, correct?
The trees are on the berm, correct, because that's...
You, you, you heard what the town manager described, right?
Correct.
With the eight-foot composite wall. So I guess to make it simple is, as the developer, can you commit to that?
Yes.
Does that satisfy...
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Wait, wait, wait.
Wait a minute.
You seem a little hesitant.
Yeah, well, here's the thing, there's, there's two items proposed.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
One is an eight-foot composite wa- composite wall. The other is a six-foot solid wall made of brick. Me personally, if I were to go ahead and approve this, I would approve it with a six-foot solid wall because of the density of the wall blocking sound coming through. Dense material absorbs sound, therefore dissipates less. That's, that's my personal...
I'm good with that.
Okay. Shirley, do you have?
So can you compare it to a six-foot solid wall?
Yes, she's a, a brick.
Yes.
You, you were talking to brick wall, right, Mr. McIntyre?
Yes, I was, and that, I think that is part of the, the, um, of the application is that it lists either or. If we do make a motion, we would have to specify which one that we would. Because it's a, it's a conditional zoning, so we add that condition of the wall. We get to select which wall if we do make that, that, um, that motion.
And can we just clarify that, the six-foot wall like Sun Valley?
Yes.
Similar materials to the Sun Valley Commons?
Right, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Head, did you have an opinion on this?
I'm...
You're just absorbing?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking all this through. And are we looking at the position where, but a question for you. Didn't you say that, that the six-foot wall would take more? You're really going to have to come in and, and do a lot of grading, is that right? I mean, it's, it's going to require a lot more...
You, for the solid wall, you have to bore and pour the concrete. You have to have the equipment back there, so it will disturb some of the trees.
But you will make every effort to save as much as you can.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
But it, but it's more permanent.
Oh, it's...
Correct.
I have a question. Pat, Patrick, did you say the six-foot wall needed to be on that berm? That would be the best sound-absorbing?
Anytime you elevate the solid body, it will resist, resist the sound wave and it becomes a better barrier, to answer your question.
So the problem with doing that on the berm is if we're putting a solid wall, wall on top of the berm, how do we get back there to maintain the rest of the site? So we had to put it on the property line so that we can maintain all of those trees. Like one of the residents was saying, okay, who maintains the trees? That's our responsibility. But if there's a solid wall on top of the berm, we have no way of getting back there.
I'm clear. Thank you, thank you.
Does that clarify everything for you?
Yes, I, for one, if we're looking, talking about the wall, would agree with Councilman McIntyre that the six-foot brick wall solid is the way to go.
Okay.
And it's, 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 it's a lot harder to get through a six-foot wall than to get through a composite, if you ask me, but...
Okay. So as it stands, if it's to my understanding for council to vote, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Moser, you have a thirty-foot utility easement that cannot be disturbed between the property owner's line and your property line. Is that...
Correct.
Correct.
Well, hold on.
It's on, it's on subdivision property.
It's on the subdivision's property.
It's not on our property.
It's not on your property, so...
Behind our property line.
So it's part, it's part of, part of it?
It's part of their lot.
It's part of their lots, okay.
Yeah, it's on their lots.
All right. I stand corrected. Understood, council? Second, at the beginning of your property line, then you will construct a six-foot solid brick wall similar in size, color, shape and materials as close as possible to the one that's across the street by the movie theater in Sun Valley Commons.
A six-foot wall like Sun Valley Commons?
Six-foot brick wall like Sun Valley Commons.
That one's not brick, it's concrete and...
Oh, concrete, brick, sorry. I'm, I stand corrected again.
That's where I was confused, sorry.
Similar in nature to Sun Valley.
Similar to Sun Valley, as long as that.
Is that understood by council?
And be constructed first.
And to be constructed first? Can you do that? Okay.
I guess the specifics of just before the building starts going up.
Okay.
Something like that, first you shut.
I mean, Todd, I guess from an engineering standpoint and the erosion control and all that stuff, are you going to allow something like that?
Should, well, how about, how about this?
In principle, yes, it's no problem.
In principle, yes, let they would have.
I can bring you this one.
I mean, he would have to get with N C D N to make sure they were okay with something like that, but I mean, that... In principle, yes, you could build a wall and then maybe put the silt fence in front of the wall once it's completed. But again, they would have to phase that with other agencies as well as us.
Okay. So then the wall to be constructed at the approved time in accordance with erosion control and other government agencies. Then moving towards your proposed site, what comes next? The berm?
The tree save area.
The tree save area, then the berm with your...
Evergreens.
Evergreens on top of it, then begins the construction of the lot.
Correct.
Correct. Is council in understanding of all that in the proposal?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Sedik.
In order to go in there and, and build that... In order to go in there and, and build that wall, you're gonna have to disturb some of the existing green, correct?
Correct.
Right, so wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be better to save the existing trees and build the wall beha, toward you guys?
That, Mr. Sessid, that's been addressed.
Who do they, who do they service you? That's the problem.
And serve what?
Service.
They can't service the trees.
We, we can do that, but then it creates the issue of we have no way to maintain the rest of the property.
It has to be back to allow them to.
No, I'm talking about property line, the saved trees, then the wall. The wall will be on your property to maintain. So that way you reserve the trees, you, you freely to build the foundation and construct there, and that tree line will become a buffer for the citizens. So that way during construction, they're protected and you're not disturbing what we have.
But like the residents were saying, okay, when the trees die, when there's things on the property that you, you have to still maintain that property, but we have no way to access that, we can't get back there to, it's a tree save area, but it still has to be maintained by us.
So, so let me ask, let me, let me just, let me play devil's advocate one second. So based on what Mr. Sessid has proposed, you have a storm, tree falls, ends up on the, the homeowners, it's one of the homeowners, I hope this doesn't happen, by the way, let me, let me say this, I hope this doesn't happen. But a tree falls, it falls on the, one of the owners at Spanish Moss, on their property. What she's, what you're asking is how do we go about getting to that tree to either cut, remove, and so forth?
We can't.
Because the wall is now moved up and therefore this sits behind the property. She's talking about access to that there, whereas if she puts the fence, if the tree falls, it'll probably fall on the fence or on their property and therefore they'll be able to do that. I mean, that's my educated guess, but that, that's what you're asking, moving the fence up versus keeping it.
I, I think, one more time, the existing trees should be protected, should not be disturbed unless the, unless, unless the utility company comes in and needs to do whatever.
And.
It's easier to construct the wall, that your engineer is here, I mean, he could attest to that. We leave the buffer, you have your construction equipment, construct the foundation of the wall, and then the berm could be on that side, either one, it doesn't matter. If you put the berm on your side, you could maintain the trees and you could maintain the wall. If you put the, the berm on their side, it, it gives them, it gives them better aesthetic either way. But what I'm saying is, those two items, they are on your property, they're not within the utility easement.
Right.
And if they, they are on your property, then I think you'll be the responsible party to maintain both of them.
Right, which is what we're, we are saying is we're responsible to maintain them, so we have to be able to get to them to maintain them.
We're just trying to clarify this so council could make a vote based on those conditions that we put in there.
I mean, I guess another thing in terms, I mean, obviously with the desired location from our end for the wall along the property line, I mean, there's still provisions in the UDO that is, there is no way to avoid taking down a tree along that property line due to the construction of the wall. We have a tree survey, I know exactly what's, how they're, you know, seeing it, obviously, but to replant that in time for, you know, different size, depending on the size of that tree that's already, you know, something we'll have to do regardless of the property.
And. And our goal is to disturb as little as possible.
I mean, we can work with staff on like, you know, six inches off, right, the tree right on the property line and move the wall that's, you know, our share, you move the wall in, put in that area, trying to save that tree.
Excuse me, Mr. Theberg, could you come to the microphone? Mr. Theberg, could you come to the microphone?
Sure, sorry.
Summary.
Summary was, there's a provision to replace trees that have to be taken down in buffers in the UDO. Obviously, it's something that would have to be complied with dependent, but we would work to adjust the wall in limited fashion along the property line to avoid taking down those trees where practical. And we'd work with staff on that during the process.
Okay. Well, Ms. Moser, was what I said correct?
Can you repeat what you said?
Utility easement, wall, similar and similar materials to the one across the street at Sun Valley Commons, tree line, correct? Berm with the?
Tree save.
Tree save. Berm with evergreens on them, then you begin the pad or the parking lot or the construction.
Correct.
Okay. Utility easement, then their property line.
That's what he said.
Okay, that's what he said, that's okay, that's a clear point. Are you putting the wall up against their property?
On our property.
On your property. How far from the, how far from the property lines of the closest resident?
Twelve inches from the property line, but where their, where their.
Okay, quiet, I will, I will clear the room.
Where their.
I cannot hear more than one person at a time. This is the last warning, but thank you for the clarification.
Then where their property line begins is where the power easement starts.
Where their property line?
The property, the, the property line towards their homes is?
The power easement. So it, it's their property line, power easement.
So that is a moot point.
Yeah, and, and.
Okay, so then, you're buil, you're building it 12 inches from the residence property?
Line.
Is where the, where the wall is.
Correct. That the power company is the easement.
And that clarifies, so now that clarifies for council. Karen?
Yes.
Ms. Howe had a question about the wording of the proposed conditions.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you clarify for, for the, Karen, Ms. Howe? Can you, oh, the proposed conditions are?
So the reason I asked to have these pulled up is that since we're, if we can go to the next page, Adam, there is a tree plantings and berm required south of the eight-foot wall facing the Spanish Moss Ridge Residence Property Line. This is the condition we're talking about, so I just wanted to make sure, this is number seven that we're trying to fix right now. And so if we could clarify, you're all in the middle of it, but we're gonna change that sentence, is what we're looking to do in this, in this process we're taking on right now. And so as soon as the council can come up with what option it believes it would like to ask the developer to agree to, then we're good. Brandy?
Yes, if I may, council, we're also looking at six as well, just because staff took planning board's recommendations and drafted these conditions. The conversation has changed a little bit, obviously, as, as there's been input, more input from the applicant and just the simple feasibility as we talk through things. So the number six would be adjusted as well. And then, just based on the height, and then number seven would read north instead of south, based on the conversations here. But just in my notes, it would be a six-foot solid wall, similar in nature to Sun Valley, constructed before the building. There would be tree save, berm, and then evergreens as well. And just real quickly, I'd like to take the opportunity just to make sure that everyone in the room understands that the Unified Development Ordinance has measures to ensure the maintenance and tree protection and planting standards. It's located in chapter 860 and it spells out quite a bit of responsibility on property owners, so we're gonna ensure that that buffer remains. Thank you.
Mr. Moser had a comment.
Yes, Mr. Moser? Did you want to, we need you to take the mic or?
She corrected about six.
Okay. Okay. I have one clarification question, just for council before they make a decision. And after this, I'm going to ask for you to make your decisions. On a property line where there's a utility easement, is the homeowner allowed to build a fence at the end of their property line? Or are they restricted to leave the utility easement unused and open?
Generally depends on the easement and what's, what they're, what they're going to enforce, but generally it is, it is to be left undisturbed. Sometimes small things like fences are ignored, so people do put them in, but generally it is supposed to be an undisturbed area. And like, I'm saying that generally, I don't know what the easement says.
So generally, when you buy a piece of property with a utility easement, you're losing that piece of property for your own use.
Oh, no, you can use it, you just can't, you can't build on it.
You can't block access.
Right, generally can't build on it.
Okay, so that was just a clarification, real estate form. Council, you have three choices. You can table this hearing and continue it, or you can make your votes yea or nay. Floor is yours, conversation's been, and the proposal was what was, what I believe I clarified with Ms. Moser there. If you want to make any changes to that, now's the chance to raise your hand.
So we can, we can discuss now?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make a couple of comments. I'm really sensitive to what these folks are going through. You know, all of our council members, I believe, except myself, live in a neighborhood and with little to no risk of a commercial building coming in in close proximity to your houses. I, on the other hand, I'm not that far from Kate's skating rink, but I can tell you, being where I live, four houses away from there, which is several hundred feet, I hear Kate's skating rink on Saturday, on Fridays and Saturdays. Now, the difference is, is when I decided to move in the home that we occupy, Kate's skating rink was there as well as some of the other, the businesses. So it was role reversal. I knew with open eyes what I was purchasing, what it would, value would potentially be. And so, you know, I just want you guys to just really think about that before we vote and try to put yourselves in that kind of a situation and to understand the, you know, the, why these folks are here. I'm appreciative to, to everyone that showed up tonight because I think all this input is gonna make a, a good decision whichever way it goes tonight. But it, it's just that I, I try to look at things from the other side and, and I hope you all will as we work through this.
Okay.
Um, oh, Mr., go ahead, Mr. Bob.
Well, maybe I'm a little different, but I've actually lived a neighborhood behind the bowling alley, so, called Sherry Park in Virginia Beach, so I didn't have a problem with it. But, um, so I did campaign for this project when I ran, so I, I have liked the project. But what I did mostly like about what has happened here is, is I have seen the town manager and the town staff really listen to the people in Spanish Moss and your concerns, and I have seen us go to a solid wall, I have seen us extend the buffer zone to 43 feet. So those things I really like. I don't seem like we have a security concern over at the movie theater. I don't think there's been a security concern around Kate's skate. I don't think there's been a security concern around Extreme Ice where they have a lot of later hours and alcohol. So no one mentioned those things. I do like the utility thing in the buffer. I know a lot of people I talked to in campaigning said they wanted to see things come to Indian Trail that would be for the kids and the grandkids. I mean, there's a bowling alley in the White House, and like someone mentioned, it's the number one participatory sport in the world. And I like the pet store coming, I don't have to go to Matthews to get Little Joe's ferret treats, so that'd be good. So there are things, I do like the area from the standpoint of it is entertainment district. We have the movie theater there. So I think the project, to me, kind of fits the area, and that's where I'm at. I know, being in church, we've taken church youth groups to bowling, and they won't have to go to Matthews or different places. So I do kind of like the area, but I do like the fact that the town staff and the people have really worked hard to, to listen to the people's concerns, and I appreciate that, everyone. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Howe, did you have any closing remark?
I think we've made a good effort to try to resolve this, and we, you're not gonna please everybody, unfortunately, but I think that we did try to do our best, and that's all you can really ask of someone. And, you know, where I live, there's some trees that are overgrown and had fallen down on the area that they put dirt on. And we'll be calling someone to come and check on them, and then we'll put some new trees in there, and that'll solve that, which it would solve your problem too. But I hope everybody's understanding, like I said, it's, it, it, everybody's not happy with what we're gonna decide on here. And, but you have to, you have to come to some decision to move forward, and I think we're, we're trying hard. And for everybody that had a comment tonight, I'm glad you did get a chance to come back up and speak one-on-one there. I used to get behind that mic quite often, and I, the three minutes goes fast, but I had a lot to say too, but you just have to talk faster, that's all. Thank you.
Ms. McIntyre, do you have anything to say in closing?
Yes, just one point. Residents, all of your emails that you sent, we read, everyone in council here, we read them, we take them into consideration. When we come, when we sit up here, the easiest thing for us to say is no, that's the easiest thing. However, we put a lot of thought into this and a lot of deliberation. We don't just go about saying yes and, and go forward. So that being said, whichever way this, this zoning motion comes down, I, I want to encourage you to keep writing, especially if something does concern you. You can also call the council too as well. All of our numbers are on the web, are on the town's website, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, council, you have votes to make, if you so choose to move forward with the conditions of the eight, six-foot wall. Did I forget you again?
No, we're fine. I, I mean, I've made enough comments, I think, already.
Sorry. I'm getting used to the new arrangements.
What I want to understand is, let's make sure we outline exactly what we're voting on.
If you want, if you want, I can take a stab at it.
I can.
I, I can take a stab at it.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the consistency findings as read into the record by staff for CZ 2019-0045 for Sun Valley Station, ordinance number 323, with the following conditions. The wall will be a six-foot wall like the Sun Valley Theater. The wall will be to be constructed as early as possible or permissible in accordance with the soil control erosion of North Carolina Union County and Indian Trail. That the, the wall will be followed by a tree save area, a berm with evergreen, the evergreen that, Ms. Moser, can you clarify the evergreen just so that we have it on record?
Theodore Cedar.
Theodore Cedar, that's the evergreen that we're gonna use, followed by the pad, which is, could be the parking lot. That is the motion, sir.
I, I would add that you asked for, and other conditions as put, presented by staff.
Sorry, apologize, let me add one more thing. And as other conditions as requested by staff.
Okay, Mr. McIntyre is?
One, one more, that it is a bowling alley that we actually, family, whatever it is, excuse me. No?
No.
Can you add that?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. McIntyre made that motion, it was a lot to say, hopefully you all, so I need, all in favor? Opposed? Let the record stand, all are in favor, Mr. Head opposing. I need a second motion of approval or denial for the rezoning ordinance.
Motion to approve as presented, the request to approve the rezoning CZ 2019-0045 for Sun Valley Station, ordinance number 323.
With the conditions as stated above.
With, with the conditions right above.
Stated previously.
Stated previously by Mr. McIntyre.
Mr. McIntyre has made the motion to approve the project for rezoning, all in favor. Let the record stand, oh, opposed. Let the record stand, all were in favor with Mr. Head opposing. Motion carries four to one, that would constitute a super majority, does not need to come back for a second vote.
Mayor Alvarez, Mayor Alvarez, all that's on tape, so I'll get it verbatim, but did that include the consistency findings?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, that moves us to old business, 2020 council regular and special meeting calendar. If you could put that up on the screen, do we have it up on the screen?
Yeah. I wanted to, let's get moving, you know? You pay in here, man.
Do you have a copy of the calendar to put up on the screen? Okay, thank you. I will, all right. Okay. Counsel, by it. All right. Before you, before anybody chimes in, before you, there is the proposed meetings for, scheduled for the year, which we have to post. We're an open governing body. There's a couple of changes that should be made right off the bat, pending council approval. Just remember, we can always call a special meeting as need be. The January fourteenth meeting conflicts with the crypto orientation. I make a proposal to council to please move that to the week prior to the seventh.
Prior to the seventh, oh, on the seventh?
Make the meeting January seventh, if that's no conflict for anybody on council.
I'm good.
Ms. Howe, are you okay with that?
I-
We moved the meeting a week before, surely. That's what he said.
To make it January seventh?
Yeah, that makes-
As opposed to the fourteenth, if Mr. Head and Mr. Barber are okay with no conflicts?
You never know where you're going to be that day.
At this point, yeah, with my mother, you never know. But yeah, that, that works.
Okay, all right. That's proposal number one. If we could delete the second meetings in November and December due to the holidays, and if need be, we can add a special meeting as traditionally done?
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay. Does anybody have any special date on, that they needed to change on that? No?
You never know where you're going to be.
You never know where or if.
Um, the April meeting will be, I think, the fourteenth?
Yes.
Will be spring break for me, for my children, and we will, we brought them with a trip. So I may not necessarily be here, but I don't want the council to not meet because I'm not here, but just giving you a heads up.
Generally, we all have things that come up. But thank you for stating for the record.
Just putting it on the record, so, you know.
I'm sure Mr. Head will have plenty of golf tournaments.
I wish.
So if there's no other adjustments that need to be made, I'll need a motion from council to approve the amended calendar.
One second, sir. Mr. Sedik wants to say something.
If you agree on March the tenth and April the fourteenth, that will help us so we could schedule our budget meetings.
Well, that's not been changed.
So we-
Okay, no, March and April haven't been touched.
It says to be determined.
That's for the budget, so they can determine the dates. So if there's no changes to the calendar, I need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar with the changes of the January fourteenth meeting being moved to the seventh of January, two thousand twenty, twenty, sorry, two thousand and twenty, and the, and the November twenty-fourth meeting and December twenty-second meeting be removed. If need be, a special meeting can be added at that particular time.
Mr. Morse, did you want to ask you a question now?
I don't think it's relevant to the schedule, so we're good.
Okay. Okay, Mr. McIntyre's approved the, made a motion to approve the amended calendar. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Patrick, you'll make the, you'll make the changes?
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you.
I have the question.
Did you want it?
Yeah, you had mentioned about a training session in January.
Yes.
And I had given you a bad, a date that wasn't good for me.
Okay, well, we'll, we can work that out.
I didn't know if we were deciding that tonight or not.
No, 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 that's, that could be done by email.
Is that going to be up through Raleigh or what?
No, 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 that's just internal.
Thank you.
Just internal, just-
So I wanted to make my reservations.
Give a date you're clear, that you're good on, okay? That's, that's easily moved around. There's no new business or anything. Patrick, did you have any final words?
I will be sending a new format for the town manager's report, much more simplified, but it's going to cover about the last two, two and a half months. So it'll be a lot of items in there, but since we have Mr. Barber, we, we would like to bring you on board with how we provide the information in the manager's report. We try to mention everything we can. So between the newsletter, the report, I think we, we cover everything. So that's the only item I have, Mr. Mayor. And we should be receiving it soon. We're done with it.
All right, that brings us to council comments. Karen?
Ms. Howe?
Well, let's see. I just wanted to thank everyone for their cards and calls and comments and promises. I remember the promises. Now, they're supposed to cover my back. So, and my husband unfortunately won't see this, but the family will. And that was very thoughtful. I appreciate that. And the reason I'm here tonight is because Ken and I had an agreement that everybody said you should stay home. And I said, no, he wants to keep me busy. And he said, I got to live on. And, you know, you shouldn't have anything holding you back. You can go where you want to go and do what you want to do. So that's what I'm going to do. And I hope I'll make him proud of me one day, too, because I'm very proud of this. Thank you so much. You all knew him, and he's a good guy.
Have you decided who's going to be the Uber driver?
I guess we all take turns.
They call. They, it's really amazing. I get a call and be ready at five thirty. I'm coming to pick you up. But don't think I, don't appreciate that, because it's hard when you're a female driving at night, too. I mean, just, just for safety reasons. But I said, we had a good group here, and we do.
We still do?
We still do.
Yes.
And, and you owe me five dollars, too. We made a little bet.
Mr. Barber?
First off, I'd like to thank and congratulate the Weddington Warriors. We probably got some residents live or go over there on their state championship. I'd like to thank Indian Trail resident Sam Howe on his selection as the ACC Rookie of the Year. Being in the Lions Club, we actually had a relationship with the Howe family. He's got a smart, older brother that goes to Appalachian that won a scholarship from the Linn Lions Club here in Indian Trail. So he's not the only great one in that great family. So I want to congratulate him. I'd like to give a shout out to Bill and Judy Wooton, whose property just got approved here tonight. It is Bill Wooton. I don't know if you know, but he's a forty-year, spent forty years here in Indian Trail and Indian Trail Lions Club of serving the community, owned a roofing company here, and that's the people that own the property. So I don't know if a lot of people know, he wasn't here because he's had some health problems, but I think it's kind of good that his property got approved, considering all he's given to the town over the years. A lot of, a lot of kids been able to see because of the forty years' effort he's put in, in this town. So I, I think he needs a shout out. So to Sun Valley Station, maybe I ought to call that the Wooton Family Fund Center. But anyway, I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, and, and see you next year.
Mr. Head?
I, I know that several of you have reached out with my mother, and, you know, I just want to say she turned ninety-one today.
Awesome.
And that, you know, she's, she's progressing. We are probably looking at maybe moving her up here. But, but, you know, several of you have reached out to me, and I want to thank you for that. Captain, as always, thank you and your staff for what you do. These fine people here, thank you. We, we keep you up late at night on a couple of occasions, but I think you can see, and I really appreciate, that we really hadn't skipped a beat. We're, we're turning over every stone. We are really thinking about doing right by our town. Again, happy holidays to everybody, and everybody drive home safe. Thank you.
Mayor Alvarez?
I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Thank you, council, for a well-organized, well-run meeting, a well-respected meeting between all of you. And I don't envy the decision you made tonight. I look forward to making it, making this project one of the best brought to the town. Thank you, Captain James. Thank you, staff. On a somber note, I just received word that the chaplain of our VFW just passed away, Mr. Bill Griffin. It was his son Josh who was sta-, his grandson Josh who was stabbed eight times in Midhill about seven months ago, and he was in a lot of hurt and pain. My thoughts, and I'm sure I could speak for all of you, our thoughts and prayers go out to Bill's family. He was at Ken's service this past weekend. He was a fine man, and we thank him for his service to our town and our nation. On that note, have a great holiday, everybody. Merry Christmas.
Oh, right. We have a closed session.
No, we don't.
I have to forget somebody every week. See, you-
Mr. Morse hasn't spoken.
No wonder why I'm a squirrel.
Mr. Morse?
Yeah.
I wish the residents were still here, and hopefully they'll watch YouTube and, and hear this later. But as council member McIntyre said, every email that came in, I read, and, and there was a lot of good input provided by the residents. You know, one of the things that I'm, that's very important to me is property rights. And trying to balance the rights of, property rights of those residents, along with the folks that were selling this property, and then being able to have a good discussion that was beneficial and, and developing a compromise that I think is going to be a win-win, especially when you consider that there could have been other things brought to this property that was spoken about, the apartments, and, and that was, that was something that, that could have happened. I think this is going to be a good project. It does, to me, it does still fit in the spirit of the entertainment district. And I think, council, you made a, a good decision. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And, and I also want to just do a brief shout out that Hometown Heroes is having their big fundraiser this weekend. They'll be having an auction and a Sugarplum cook-off, and I, I hope that you guys that are, that are hearing this can support them. They do, do work with families of children with cancer, and this is the, the season of giving. And I can think of no better way than to, to try to help someone that you, you don't even know. And with that, God bless everyone, and have a good night.
Mr. McIntyre?
So, few things. Staff, I want to thank each of you for your time, your efforts throughout the year. When I sit up here, I am well-prepared based on the information that you provide, the feedback, and the service to our town. I do feel that this is one of the best places to live in this country. And the residents flock to this area because the services we provide are really good, and it's all because of you. So thank you very much for that, all your families. Please pass on my regards to them, because we know how late you come home, right? Secondly, Captain James, to you and your staff, thank you for the job that you guys do. Please keep it up. We appreciate you. Council, it's an honor to serve with you, each of you. I do appreciate the discussions that we have, and the fact that we can sit here and take votes, and at the end of it, there's no name calling or inviting. That does show a lot of respect and professionalism, and it's good that we can keep that going in this day and age where there's no bickering among us. I, I do appreciate you guys approaching this in that manner. Thank you very much. And I said guys, and I apologize, but guys and gal. So sorry about that. Merry Christmas to everybody. I am a Christian, so I celebrate Christmas, but Merry Christmas to everybody. If you do not celebrate Christmas, whatever you celebrate, you know, best wishes to you and your family. And everybody have a good holiday and a good safe drive home. Thank you very much.
Okay. Now I can speak? I didn't leave anybody else out. My apologies. Not intentional. We have a closed session. In regards to NCGS one four three three one eight one one A, Economic Development, I need a motion to go to closed session.
So moved.
Ms. McIntyre's made a motion. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Let's go. All right. I need a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Mr. Morse made a motion to come out of closed session. All in favor? That's unanimous. I need a motion adjourned. Mr. McIntyre made a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Good night.
Good night, gentlemen.
See you guys Friday night, seven o'clock.
First meeting, right?
There you go.
Friday night, seven o'clock, see you guys.
Is it an open bar, or what's the deal?
Yes.